13th, 2017, let's call the meeting to order, stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. More than that, more. I'm sure she hasn't, no, she could have some minutes, her reports received and filed. Your schedule changed since yesterday?
No.
Okay.
It was all yesterday, so we can move it.
Okay, commission comments? No bids and contracts?
Budget.
Unfinished business? Okay, new business, in-house budget discussion. Where do we want to start?
We've everything similar to last year and we'll move on. We'll make some cuts somewhere. Nothing's really changed, has it?
Well, we were looking, we were trying to look, to find more money for raises, and so, obviously, that's why we had Public Works come up here.
So, we're gonna take it all out of Public Works?
No.
No? Well, if we're gonna do it, we gotta do it everywhere, and everybody's gonna have to take a cut, bottom line.
Yeah.
But, the way I hear from everybody else is they can't. So then, I guess we can't afford raises. Well...
I don't know, unless you found places to do it. We can nickel and dime stuff through here, but it's not gonna be enough for the raises. That's my, that's my two cents on that. I don't know where we're gonna take it from. We can get rid of the Wall Street Journal and get rid of different things, but it's not gonna meet our $125,000 that we need.
Nope, it just...
What we needed?
What in the world are you doing, Debbie? You know if you flash something shiny around, you're gonna lose me. What is that?
So...
I want one.
Last time we talked, Chris wanted to see surplus or deficit by fund. Which, I did a spreadsheet.
What were we last year overall, surplus or deficit?
I didn't do last year.
I mean, overall, where are we gonna end up? We have budget deficit, or we have budget surplus?
In which fund?
Everything, overall, bottom dollar.
I don't know, overall.
What? You're an auditor, and you don't know that?
I don't.
Kristen?
I look at it individually by fund, 'cause if you're, a surplus to Road and Bridge, it doesn't affect any other fund, it's only their fund.
I'm just looking overall.
So...
'Cause it does affect it, 'cause don't we put some from general revenue in Public Works? Or they're all?
No.
Sales tax.
They're not.
Every bit of those is a sales tax.
No, Road Bridges, property tax, car, motor vehicle, that kinda stuff. Their sales taxes and capital improvement sales tax.
They get absolutely no general revenue fund, money. Okay. Then hold that one out separate.
It is.
There's lots of those.
Alright, so was there, lots of them?
I mean, the only thing that gets paid for out of general fund is general fund, other than the transfer to law enforcement.
There you go.
Every other fund is separate, they don't take any general fund money.
The collector's fund, collectors don't get anything from general revenue?
The collector is part of general revenue.
I know, that's what I'm saying, though.
So...
You got all kinds of different funds there, or not funds, but different lines.
Yeah, so departments, there's different...
Okay, different lines in, let me reword it, I'm sorry.
There's different departments in general fund. But if you're talking about different funds, they don't get money from general fund.
Alright, I'll let y'all go. 'Cause I'm ready to argue this morning.
Okay, so, go ahead, Kristen.
Well, let's just look at Public Works, 'cause that's the one we're talking about. So, currently, right now, we had a $653,000 deficit in their budget.
Which, you mean deficit, the total revenue coming in versus the total expense that's...
Right, so current year only, you take cash port and contingency out?
Yes.
And the difference between their current year revenue and current year expense.
Okay.
Budget 101? If it's a deficit, it means the money coming in is less than what's going out? Cool, okay, carry on. Well, shit, I thought we knew that already, coming in. What's the bottom line here? What are we doing? What's our exercise here? We're doing jumping jacks?
The problem between the carry port and the contingency, it's always been, uh, people, the difference, so taking them out makes a big difference, obviously, it's 653. But the difference right now between carry port and contingency is 605, so... What we had said the other day is the deficit column is what you guys wanted to look at. So, Kristen got this spreadsheet together, showing you. Leaving those two things out, um, that's where we're at. But in Public Works, even though they made budget a deficit every year, it never ends up that way.
But you said you'd like to get this closer to 500?
I, I would like to be at 500. 500 make me feel more comfortable than 605. The last two years, we've been somewhere between 5 and 600. 653 is a little high, and, and it changed from the original 605 because we added back in your dome repair and some of the other changes that you came in and asked for. So, uh, we kinda added those back in, and that's kinda where we got to. So, at this point, is, is there somewhere we can cut back and make sure you still have?
There's always, like I told Sam, we can always cut, but there's a possibility there's gonna be kind of services to go along with that. That's the only thing that I'm concerned about. I don't want, if we're gonna, correct me, you too, I just don't wanna cut services without, I guess, some kind of acknowledgement that we're doing. We've talked, when Debbie sent the deal, we talked the other day, you know, we can take money out of, uh, I hate to say it, but out of our equipment. We're just now starting to build back up more of what we got.
Alright.
That a few years ago, had us push that away. We could probably save a little bit out of our salt, but, you know... That's all dependent on other nature, you know? Budget we gave you is what we're feeling, is to run. Like Debbie said, though, there's always things, you know, there's something comes up, we don't spend as much out of concrete or out of asphalt, because we're doing something else. It's kind of got a built-in, built-in reserve, just about, but, you know, we've had years where we've, we've needed it, but, again, you know, we'll, we'll do what, you're not gonna get any opposition, I think, from us. True. As long as we don't go too far, as Larry said. Like I said, we can take some out of the equipment, I don't know of any other large budget items.
How much money are you looking for?
Well, like I said, I would, I would prefer to be somewhere between 5 and 6. Now, right now, you're at 653. And if we really wanna put, uh, more of a salary increase, we're looking for that money.
So, we made a few changes here the other day, and we cut some of those areas back. Did, did you save those, Debbie?
Yes, they're in...
Four-hundred?
Uh, I can rerun those four.
But that really doesn't add up.
It'll show where the difference is.
Well, that only got us to the 650.
Yeah, it's...
Well, they're there.
Well, it doesn't show you which lines they are, so if they're in there...
Oh, well, we don't need to see that.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to talk about each one. Are you sure they were good with it, or...
Went through...
So if we get a cut out of theirs and get enough for them to get raises, what we're gonna do with the rest of it? 'Cause we don't have the rest of it. We're just gonna give Public Works a raise? So then, why are we doing this exercise? We're gonna cut back all our salt and stuff and then not be able to do it anyway? I guess I'm not understanding that part.
Well, we gotta cut, we, we need to cut 150,000 out of it, just to get their deficit more manageable.
The one that really hurt you guys is we had to increase the insurance.
I think that's what's really hurt us more than anything.
And then the workers' comp. Now, what is 249? Leased equipment? That's 1,000 there. Chris, maybe you could, was that a comp? Something we weren't leasing to...
Yeah, so that was, that was one, and we were just looking for areas to try to cut some of your expenses, and so, obviously, you, you quit jumping around.
Well, I wanted to go back to tell you where the, what we were spending this year, okay?
See, we're, that's, we're, we're right there again, we won't be jumping around here. We got numbers up there, we don't even know what really are, because if you carry contingency forward, but you didn't do cash port, then you pull this out, and then you put this on top of it, and you carry the one, boom!
Anyway, your, your bigger items on your leased equipment were your excavator and your, uh, rubber tire loader, and so, this felt like, you know, you had asked for 50, well, it felt like 30 would probably cover it, I don't know. And that, we're just kinda guessing and trying to pull some money out, but, I mean, you got $3,000 a month, times six months, or whatever, that's 18,000 of it.
What we're planning on right now to do, uh, Kristen, is just leasing a rubber tire loader. We haven't got it yet, I'm thinking, just trying to pick one up, just if we can move that little one of the purpose up to Center Town.
Right.
Or put it on there at the shop. The thing that we're concerned about is the older equipment we've got. Right now, our high list's down, uh, that's where we were wanting that, you know, the...
Right.
If we have piece of equipment go down, a grader go down, which we had two of them this year that went down for probably a month, that we can, we're able to pick some up.
What else you got?
10,000 out of repairs.
So, I got an idea, we're gonna be back here tomorrow anyway. Y'all know how much we need to cut out of there, we send you all to your offices, and y'all can figure it out, and come back and do this tomorrow.
I would stay away from repairs and parts, as we're running, we've got 18 equipment out there, truck-wise, equipment-wise.
Okay. Let's, let's just go through the others and then, yeah? I mean, that's, not, not a set stone, we just, we're just playing with it.
I understand.
15,000 less than culverts, down from 70 to 55. And then, uh, oh, you were wanting the extra five back in concrete, so we took 1,000 out of salt, and we took 4,000 out of erosion control. It's basically what we did to get you five back in concrete. Like I said, just a thought.
I don't know how much happened in erosion control.
Right now, nothing.
Pretty little.
And it's coming out of something else there.
Well, then you're not paying for it out of there, 'cause right now, your current activity is zero.
It doesn't leave much, but I didn't know how much you were doing outside for little projects, so...
I'd say it's, it needs to be more than what it is, but we are doing it, but I don't know why that would be zero, unless it's just not coming out of there. We just were a bunch of...
So that, that's what we were looking at there, so, I mean...
Understand.
Is that it?
This one?
Yeah, we already talked about that, culverts. So that, that's where we got, and we're still at a 650, $650,000 deficit, so...
I mean, we could consider the repairs to the dome as, you know, the revenue did come in this year, we're just carrying it forward to next year, so, I mean, you could eliminate that from current year revenue expenditures, just because it's a timing issue. You know, if the money is there, we're gonna carry forward more to pay for it next year. That one, I mean, I guess you could wiggle a little bit on, it's something that should've been done this year, but didn't get done, so we're gonna do it next year. Did we open bids for it, or is it this afternoon, or something?
Oh, it, it was there.
I think...
So, but we only got what from the insurance, or are they covering?
Well, it depends, it depends what those bids, we've only gotten 7, 8,000, something like that.
Well, he said he could, I mean, that number can just...
It's small, and then it opens up to 330.
Okay. That should get down to 645 there.
Hey Debbie, go back and do your salt.
Laurie, I think that's where the biggest thing is, you know, we budget this much, we only spend, and thank God, we only spend that much, but we don't know every year. But those are the things that make it look like it's, uh, a deficit spending.
Fuel's another one, uh, you know, I see where you can cut that, but...
I don't think we cut fuel, do we?
I did from there, there, but I cut both sides, so I cut your revenue and your expense.
See, you know, I don't know where we are with current activity, as far as if you guys are up to date, but there, compared to where we budgeted, is a big part of what. And I understand you're budgeting for all different departments, but there's cushion in there in case prices go up and everything.
The way we do it, I actually base it off of our last year's usage, uh, and take that correspondence of what it projected to use, you know, up till now. I'd say there's not really, the only cushion in it is that price, you know? I use the department or, uh, energy site that I, we're in our budget every year, you know, that's our projected prices for remainder this year, as well as next year. Sometimes low, sometimes high, it's kinda like one or, you know? The gallons in there, I just about hang my hat on. You know, I can show you charts of the usage throughout, you know, the last 10 years that I've been doing. And that's kinda what I've said earlier, I think, but, you know, the gallons are there. Longest period or, in Afghanistan or something else that blow up with fun, you know?
It's, it's a little concerning that you're really using as much salt as you are, you know, like even this, this past year. Just, just because, I mean, it's been so mild that it, I mean...
The problem with last year, Chris, is the ice we had and the rain.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we don't, when you have the, the rain, if you don't continue to be out there from the down, it's gonna flash over on you and us.
Right.
Yeah, and Chris, I'll be honest, this is the same conversation I had with Eric and Larry last week, you know, is can we save our salt, you know? Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I just, I look at that number, and I, and I just, you know, remember last winter and it just being really mild, and I, I understand your concerns, but, I mean, I look at, you know, probably not projected, but you probably already spent what you're gonna spend in the 222, but I just look at that number, and I'm like, what's that gonna be if we have a hell of a winter?
Yeah, well, the thing is, that thing...
I mean, because double, triple, I mean...
Part of that, though, Chris, is, is, again, we fill up every year, that number usually, right now, is the number that we, that we're spending for the year, 'cause once we get done with the, the summer, we fill back up. Now, a little bit to run that up some last year, we have the new Center Town Celtic, that we had to haul salt to.
So you got it stocked full, too?
Yeah, it's, it's stocked full.
So they should be full everywhere?
Right.
Yeah, we're full.
I mean, you, you gotta refill it, though, when you run out.
And I think if we have a winter like that, you know, like double, triple, more than likely, one of those would be declared, I would think, an emergency, federal emergency, that we would get...
They don't got any money either.
I was gonna say, the last, the last snowstorm that we had, you know, but that was a different administration, not our name of that, it was gonna be the last snowbird, see if we'd get funded.
Do we only buy cinders if we have a really bad winter?
We can't get cinders, so, and this, this year we can't. This year, we, we got it, that's why they're in there. I think last year, we were buying sand, but I, I bet mine always took that out of road materials instead of, um, cinders. If we can get cinders, we buy. You know, that's a problem, it should always close, that's where we used to go. We've got another, I think, one was coming in from Lattie or here.
King Hill?
Thomas Hill.
Thomas Hill, yeah, Thomas Hill. Okay, so really, the only other place that there was money was to basically put off the equipment purchase. Okay, we take a look at that, Debbie, what they had in there?
So the bottom line, you got, like, 150,000 cut out of ours?
Well, 100,000 to 150,000.
If you can, can we go back and bring you, or send you a number? With this email, but, sit down, work papers, stuff.
That's a great idea. Wish I'd have thought of that.
Well, that's kinda why I talked to you, 'cause I don't, I don't wanna...
I know.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, you know, and I understand it's hard, but it's a hard year, too. We're not, we're not fighting it, you know, what we've given you is our best professional, you know, opinion of what we need, you know, to keep services and everything the way they are. You know, we've been cutting back for years on different things, you know?
I mean, obviously, the, you know, you got three, three things in there, it looks like, been more 550 in a single axle truck. I mean, I just, I mean, I'm okay with you guys going back and talking about it and seeing what you come up with, but, I mean, I'd just like to, uh... I'd like more information about your discussions and, and, and your logic, I mean, I just don't wanna, a short email that says, ah, we could do without a bim or, oh, that doesn't, that don't help me.
We'll, we'll give you, we'll give you justification for all of them, you know? Or if you want us to come back, we can come back, come on, you know, it's up to you, you know, and sit down and discuss it some more.
Okay.
And Larry, I think the concern is if you would have a really bad year, and we did spend every line, and we actually solved that $650,000 deficit, next year's gonna be really hard. So, we would rather, you know, try to slowly move it back a little bit and make some small cuts than having to try to in one year, you know, cut out a bunch.
Well, and of course, I agree, you know, with Mark, he wanted to spend down that, that carry port, you know, and that's, we're, one of the issues why we are where we're at, you know? It's, we'll try to do the best of our ability, what y'all want us to do.
And when you guys looked at the insurance going up, 150,000, 85,000 of that was for the dome, and, so it really didn't go up that high.
We'll get back with you, like I said, we can email it to you if you want us to come up and discuss it, we'll be more than glad to do that, too.
I guess let us, let us get through today and see where we're at, and we'll let you know.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yep, one, one day you're a hero, Eric gets an award, and then... Yeah. Now we're back to reality.
It's there, but it's the Road and Bridge budget.
Is it, uh... So, obviously, there's some discussions about, uh, modifying our driveway approach policy, and has all that come out of that concrete line or...
But again, Chris, that, that number that's coming out there, you know, based on the last, I don't know how many years it deals, I forget, like, five, last five years, really not that much, you know? Time-wise, there's quite a bit behind there, but that's not taken out there.
Right.
You know, the amount of concrete on approach, a couple yards, a couple hundred dollars, so...
Save some more time, then, doesn't it?
What we're looking at with that concrete is, all these concrete streets we've got out there, we have to get something done with it, repairs. Now, if you wanna outlaw concrete streets, that'd be fine, but...
Still be spending 65,000 on concrete, probably. I said you'd still be spending 65,000 on concrete, probably.
We could spend 160,000.
Yeah.
And then Eric, you're gonna have to send us numbers for some stuff?
I gotta relook it.
Any way I can, but, I mean, the things that y'all made us there.
Chris and we had it all balanced out, but then, uh, 133,000 change. So we'll have to cut some things out and rearrange some things.
Like I told you all before, I'm doing my job, and there's no way in hell I'd do your own, including you.
You'll have a good day.
Thanks.
You wanna go to EMS?
Not really.
It's gonna take the most time.
Yeah, let's, let's do it.
Fun.
Do the enterprise one first.
Okay, what, what page are we on in the book here?
106. So, do you wanna just skip salaries, but go through, like, start with professional services?
Synopsis, the 40,000, right?
Right.
Activity in 16 to 18, I'm not, already issued.
So, that's Dr. Looney's contract?
Correct.
And then they've added that, um, audit of their dispatch that they were doing in-house and decided they couldn't? So that's the 18,002?
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, just heads up, one, one of our peoples received an offer, he said he wanna remain people, so, which, they're one to talk to, and not an offer he says, but whatever you do on raises, we appreciate it.
Okay.
So those are the two things, and, you know, I'm not sure, I don't know what that audit, if that's a needed thing or that's a wanted thing, I don't know.
I think they're required to audit their calls, and they said they don't have time to do it in-house anymore. So we paid half of that this year, we paid 9,000 and something this year to get through the rest of this year, and then that's the amount for all of next year. Fire station rent looks a little funny, it's only because we separated it out from their regular rent that they paid us, so that's the three stations that we're currently paying for either all or half of the utilities. That's the one where we're having a hard time getting them to bill us quarterly.
Why, uh, go back to that, please? So why is there such a big discrepancy in the general amounts?
I think one of them was like a, probably 24-hour stations, persons, you had a two on, I don't know.
I really can't tell you, I know they submit their utility bills.
I can get you the contract, so, it's not, not all.
I don't think it has amounts in it.
No, that's something that's different of what we're paying.
Brazito's a 24-hour station. So does Region West, should have the same amount of people there, and so, one of them we're paying, so for Nita, we're paying all the utilities, and Region West, we're only paying half. So, are we running heat with the doors open, or what? Or air conditioning with the doors open? Nice.
I think we're monitoring the utilities, I'm sorry.
Uh, it just looks out of whack.
Well, I think part of, one of the differences is, like, the DSL line at Brazito, we play, pay separately, and it's not out of this line, it's out of our communications line, so it could be Regional West is billing us for all of it. together in this line, whereas Brizito, there's little things that we're paying here and there that aren't in this line.
So, we use the DSL line?
I think they have to, to hook into their computer system.
Dispatch?
Yeah. So like, when they take their computer off to run reports or whatever while they're in the station, they have to have that DSL to hook into it.
So do we get the bills submitted, or do I need to take, like, redoing all that?
Um, no, so, Debbie, go find rentals. So we'll get activity on that one. So the five thousand dollar ones is our rent we charge for Shepherds.
Okay.
So the only ones we've gotten was Regional West, we got in February, and then we got a Regional West in September, we have not paid anything else.
So everything we got is from Region West?
Yep. And then Debbie, if you click on Region West, it'll show you what... So we pay Amarin, we pay Sewer, we pay Pest Control, Water District. Yeah. Which their water bill seems really high.
Well, a lot of that seems really high. Go back and look at that. That's the utilities, four hundred and fifteen dollars a month, that per sewer?
Sewer.
It's gotta be sewer. It's the only thing just...
I mean, what are they doing?
Yeah.
I mean, their water just must be running down the sewer all the time. And their sewer's based on their water consumption. I mean, even their water bill, what?
Water bill seems really high.
Can review and renegotiate those contracts.
They must be washing their cars a lot, and then their...
Well, go find a water bill, so they should be attached.
Four hundred and seventy dollars.
Four fifteen on the sewer.
I know, that, that, the last two were four seventy.
Oh, were they?
Yeah, that's, I'm like, damn.
I mean, maybe they need to put in a different meter out there or something for, if they're washing their vehicles or something, because they shouldn't be paying sewer on that.
There, so units used, water bill, is that ninety-six thousand, seven hundred?
Uh-uh. Yeah, somebody needs to take a look at that. That's ridiculous. No mud's time. They either got something leaking, or, and then the sewer bill's outrageous, too.
Well, like I said, the concern for us is by, by their agreement, they're supposed to be billing us quarterly, and we have no way of budgeting this because we're not getting the bills, and they're not billing us quarterly, so we have no idea.
I mean, I, you know, those bills seem a lot alike, too, but...
I know what I called it, it's like based on square footage, I agree, it was based on, City came over the sewer rates. So we have quite a disparity between buildings.
Well, they just adjusted some of ours, and they went down, so, yeah, I know.
It's based on square footage?
I thought that's what I told you, too, when they first took over the sewer and started billing us separately like this, I had called, because it was kind of odd to me, why are buildings are so different?
Should be based on the water consumption tally, bill everybody else.
Is that okay?
I don't know, the store, I got three stories, and I think I paid twenty-three dollars a month for Jeff City Utilities.
Sewer? Yeah, but you probably, I mean, you're using the toilet.
Yeah.
Right, that's probably, I mean, you're not, you're not doing laundry.
Well, I got ten, no, no.
But I don't, I don't think our sewer bill fluctuates. Mine's, mine's set about.
I don't know how you get four hundred and seventy dollars.
It was, they always readjust, like, in, in September, August, September.
Like, they take the average, they take your consumption, they take the average, and that's why they do a flat amount.
So if it was four seventy the last two months, it's gonna stay at four seventy for a year?
Jeez.
Go back on the first page, I thought it jumped the last two months.
Yeah, so it's four hundred and fifty.
So we'll keep going, there.
It's four seventy-seven.
Four seventy-seven, so that'll be their new amount for the year.
But this is all stuff we can do later on. We've got to get the budget, we can't change this, if we're gonna negotiate a contract or something different with them, we're not gonna be able to do that by the time we get the budget figured out. So this isn't gonna make the difference.
Well, if you guys have some idea of what we're doing here.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm fine with going through all this stuff, and, I mean, look at every individual thing, that's fine. But right now, we're gonna spend all day today and be at the same place we were when we started. We're gonna come in tomorrow, be at the same place we started, and we're absolutely doing this exercise for nothing.
We'll get equipment service contract. So last year, we spent forty-seven, this year, we're at seventy-three, next year, projected ninety-eight. But most of this is due to the addition of, I think, Verico and Zoker, and what was the third one? Priority dispatch. I don't really think there's anything we can cut there, just wanted you to see the, the increase. Laundry services, they did cut out completely, they're not gonna do laundry services anymore. We'll get medical supplies. This is the one where Jerry wants to add an additional fifteen thousand.
One thirty-two, one to one forty-four, and now I think we want to add that, we'd be at one seventy.
Well, the cost on a lot of drugs is going up, I mean, it, it really...
It doesn't seem like our bid went up that much, because we're looking the same rate for all.
Well, if that increases, then revenue should increase, too, because that's passed on.
Well, one would think that we just received multiple transfers the other day, to transfer stuff into medical supplies from all kinds of different funds.
So do we want to add fifteen thousand there?
Why? We're gonna let him transfer from all these other funds, I mean, he doesn't use all his fuel, so he uses fuel money to transfer into medical supplies.
That's the same with all the funds, once they get that bottom dollar, they can transfer left and right, either which way, to make things work, so...
Only if we approve it.
We're doing these exercises for nothing. I'm gonna go jog a couple miles, and I'm gonna have a big old pizza and a twelve pack of beer.
Did you have, what was the other thing he asked for? Is that right?
Um, meetings, national conference.
Okay, so let's look at meetings.
Well, meetings, sixteen, three hundred and sixty-five, to this year, four oh nine, to next year, twenty-five thousand.
Plus he wants another fifteen thousand, and then, he wants, so look at that one.
In here?
Yep. So I cut out the two paramedics. The paramedic scholarships. And again, I thought that one was more philosophy county-wide, so if you want to add an education, you need to be aware that that's gonna be other people asking also.
That is my only concern about the scholarship one.
And we've also taken the, we don't let a lot of people travel outside the state, maybe occasionally. He has to go into Washington DC. We have some national organizations, I think it's an organization, so, but... Meetings, travels, and dues is usually the first place that gets cut in most other departments. Unless it's a required training. Training's the same way, if you look, we were at five thousand, this year, we spent twelve, we went fifteen for next year. That should be more in-house training, so that should be them training their own people.
And we pay the employees for doing so, so this would just be materials?
Well, so pull that up, I think they have brought in a few people, they've sent their trainers to training. They retest them with their machines. That's where they buy the cards when you're certified CPR.
Well, there's some powerhouse subs in there.
So it looks like Brooke and Jennifer went to a training, and that's their reimbursement for meals.
That goes under training rather than meetings, travels, and dues, or travel, or whatever.
So theirs is a little different as far as it's broken up, they don't have a meetings, travels, and dues where it's all lumped together, like some people, theirs is broken down into meetings, training, organizations. So theirs depends on what it's for, so if they went to a training to train them to be, to be something else, they're paying it on training.
We need to do anything with this.
We have several field training officers, or people that are getting paid extra to do that, right?
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know, I...
They just get paid.
Whatever their reg, the rate is.
Right, they, they get extra money for it, they're, they call them an FTO, and they send an hour bond, wouldn't it?
I don't think so.
We had a trainer at one point, which was Kevin's position.
No, these, these are personnel that are doing field training, um, they're assigned to certain people, they get like six of them, you may be classifying them as something else.
Well, we've got the lieutenant sergeants is one of those.
That's, could be, yeah.
That's the only, that's the only bump that's a fifty cent.
So that's what that would be, I mean, I don't know.
We're trying to use a description of what the...
Tenner or something, whatever, I mean, that's...
We don't have a description of what those are.
FTO.
Organizations, another one that took a big jump.
I think things like that, we need to just...
So like, state funeral team participation, I don't know if that's something you guys...
That's not only gonna cost here, but that's gonna cost personnel, I mean, that's whatever.
It'll cost in uniforms, too.
I think for this year, I think, like, that state funeral, we need to cut that out, I think the organizations, we need to, to...
There's the national organizations that I was talking about, so National EMS Management Association.
I think some of these are, too, or not?
Well, I think, he was saying that Zerker has a, a thing, and if, you know, I don't know if they have... I don't know if that's something that would, would be beneficial.
What's the triple A membership?
I don't know. You can pull up an invoice, they paid it this year, so if it's in projected, they've paid it this year. Look at activity. American Ambulance Association.
American Ambulance.
Transport transport.
Well, that should go up.
Oh, great. So what have we spent so far this year on that?
Five thousand, nine forty-seven. Eight forty-six, I think I estimated one of those that we paid the previous year. We only spent five hundred and forty dollars last year.
Right. Be okay with five thousand?
Some.
Yep.
Take the funeral team out.
Yeah.
What else going out of there?
That one.
Medicare, we have to do. I don't know what NAE, EMTV is.
Take the triple A thing out.
Some of those might be kind of like our MAC thing, I don't know, we need to maybe ask him.
Yeah, that's been questioned before, too.
Well, it doesn't mean that you can't use it for that, but then something else would have to go. So if you want to look at, as a philosophy, I'm cutting it overall, now you tell me what's most important to you.
That's fine.
Just because we have them all still here doesn't mean, you know...
Right.
That, that's totally different.
I mean, we, we can just cut it on just one, so, anyway, give him five thousand, send it back to him and see what he says.
Yeah.
You know, if he's got really, if he really has to have something, he needs to come up here and make the case.
You believe in that, or you want me to try to get that other five ninety-five out there?
I did, I wouldn't worry about that, I just cut it, put the commission approved five thousand.
Technically, that's what it's gonna show, but Christian, we don't get all this detailed in.
Well, it is, it's in the notes later on, so...
Just pop it all in here, take all these out.
Well, I got state funeral team.
That hundred and eighty-five looks like a new one, I don't think we've paid that one. Do you want to go less than what you spent this year?
We're not very, you know, very, it's just one fifteen.
Well, I don't, what was his budget for this year?
It started at three thousand, eight forty.
There you go, so he wanted all these others, and, you know, I'm just not sure that we need to be, you know, be involved with all those organizations, and, and we have to go to all these conferences, and it's not just a membership, it's in, it's going to the conferences.
It's up here.
I don't know, what else you gotta take out of there, get the five, or...
I don't know why that NAE, MTD's went double.
Over here?
Yep.
Probably two people instead of one now?
Think it down to twenty-five hundred and near there, twenty-six hundred. Twenty-six hundred.
Oh, we got ten bucks.
Twenty-five ninety-five.
Guys good with that?
Yeah.
No?
Y'all got two, yeah, so go on.
Meetings. Did you wanna look at that? Did you wanna cut any of these out? Again, we went from.
Do we gotta go through them one by one?
Well, I just think the big things, because this is very, a place that we cut every other department, Christian said.
Well, that's fine. And I, I don't really wanna tell him which ones he's gotta go to.
All right, what a dollar amount, do you feel comfortable with?
I mean, they started at fifteen hundred bucks in the budget last year.
It would be nice to go through and, and eliminate them line by line, only because it gives his people, like whoever's paying the bills, an idea of what comes out of where.
We don't know what all those entail. I mean, the DC TRAD, no.
And are you good with leaving the fifteen thousand out for the paramedics scholarships?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. This, this is not the year.
Critical character words times four, no.
This one?
Yep.
He can kinda pick what meetings he wants to attend.
Well, that's what I was saying too, so they wanna go.
Yeah, I know.
So I think though that then they can decide later, well, we're not gonna go to this one, so we can go to that one, but it at least gives them an idea of.
That one's zero, Debbie.
So are they picking or are we picking?
Obviously, we're picking right now.
We're gonna pick right now, then they're gonna say they wanna go to a different one, or they need it, it's one they need to go to, and we're gonna end up changing it again.
I think the overall thing is just to come up with a dollar amount and then go back to them. Okay, what do you think? You tell us which one of these you wanna go to.
Kinda like we did Public Works. Say, go back to your office, here's what you need to come up with. Fix your budget where you see you can change it, and then come back. Otherwise, we go through line by line. We don't have Jerry here to defend some of it.
Yeah.
Like I said, we're doing exercises here, and I hate exercising.
Okay, what's the dollar amount you wanna, you feel comfortable going with that?
One dollar.
Okay, no.
So I guess the question here is though, if you, if you give him fifteen thousand dollars and he decides he really wants to send two paramedics to whatever, are you good with that?
Well, he's just gonna transfer from one fund to the next, so, I mean, what does it matter if we're good with it or not?
It works for you guys.
Well, yeah, but we're just letting him transfer whatever, I mean, so.
You can't say no.
Well, that's where you can give him nothing. They don't have anything to transfer from.
Well, that's why I think giving them a dollar amount, then that lets them know, you know, you're in line with any other department, you know, we.
Well, I mean. Along Jeff's, Jeff's line, the budget for seventeen was fifteen hundred bucks, so you can take them back to that. Or you could be nice and give them fifty-five hundred, but I'm not giving them eighteen or twenty-five thousand or whatever we started at.
Yeah.
Hey.
So, okay, go back in there, Debbie.
Forty.
Yeah.
So, there is miscellaneous continuing education courses. Cut them all out and put whatever dollar amount you want in there, and he can decide which courses he wants to go to.
You just have to figure out a dollar. Where am I under the button?
Close the box. Well, I think it'll, I think it'll still change it, I'm sorry.
Well, whatever it is. I mean, do you agree? That I gotta have a dollar now?
Who are we paying the CE courses for? What's?
Well, see, you can go out and do it, Debbie. I didn't know exactly which ones were which, so close that box and go to actual activity. So like.
I'll just get all of those or go to that.
Well, so I, I mainly, if I knew it was for travel expenditures, I'd put it into one. If it was anything else, I'd put it into the other. He had so many listed there, I couldn't break down exactly which meeting they went to this year, so I put it into miscellaneous CE courses for the projected.
There shouldn't be any CE courses. Why would we be paying for anybody's continuing education courses? If you wanna be a paramedic, you're gonna have.
No, we said, didn't, didn't Dr. Lu, didn't he and Dr. Ludi go?
Well, I thought that that was what was coming out of training, so like if his trainers needed.
Training is different than CE. CE is to keep your license.
But I thought they were doing most of that in-house. They were training their trainers to provide their CE courses to their employees.
I think Zerker. That Zerker user conference. Yeah, might be something that's, I don't know, I.
Most order departments have one thing they're going to in a year, maybe two. They're kinda unique, so if we just lump this all into one, and then he can figure out what he thinks is the most important.
Oh, the document conferences now?
Not picking and choosing, we're just giving you the dollar amount.
Yeah, so if you take, what dollar amount are you thinking?
I'm thinking fifty-five hundred dollars.
What do you think?
I'd say like ten thousand, just, just. I mean, that's still way below what you would budget and what he was asking for, but.
Jeff?
Not anymore than he had last year. We can look at each one of them and see what we need. If we're have the revenue increase, I can justify doing a lot more of these courses. But I haven't seen a revenue increase.
So you wanna leave it at fifty-five?
That was his amended budget for last year. The original budget was fifteen hundred bucks.
Uh, two thousand seventeen. What is it under? Meetings or training?
Just under these. So original budget fifteen hundred, amended budget fifty-five.
And two thousand sixteen, we spent three hundred sixty-five dollars.
Under meetings?
Yes.
We had CE under meetings?
Well, they've broken down, broken down all these categories and things they wanna, they go to and.
CE should be under training.
We're just gonna call them the salaries right now.
I mean, you, yeah, you could. You could say some of these are training too.
Fifty-five hundred for meetings is what I would do, same as last year. We start getting a revenue increase, then we can increase what we do for participation in other meetings and stuff.
And are you okay with training then being, um, we spent fifty-seven five and sixteen, this year we're up to twelve-three, and they're asking for fifteen. Are you okay with leaving that at fifteen? And that's kinda train the trainer, I guess.
Twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. If I go anywhere, I'm gonna go backwards with it.
Yeah, I could, I could a ten, but that's just me.
That was originally what it was.
Since I'm in a good mood, I'm just gonna leave it what it was last year. I'll be, I'm being nice instead of cutting.
The amended budget.
You amended budget or?
Twelve seven sixty-two.
Okay, Sam, where are you at?
Well, there, I'm, I'm fine too.
Do you wanna, do you wanna go to ten or twelve seven sixty-two?
I think twelve seven sixty-two.
Or you can throw a different one in.
No, I think, no, I think, I think. I didn't have any problem with the fifteen thousand, but I just think.
Well, you're too nice.
No, I just think I wanna, I want our people to.
Say fifteen then, alright. We got three numbers you can put in, or y'all just gotta pick one. Ten, twelve seven sixty-two, or fifteen? Can't believe it's only been an hour and we're almost done.
Put the five in there.
What do we decide then on training?
Twelve seven sixty-two.
Oh, okay.
All right, can you think of any other big one, Christian?
Well, uniforms, which I don't know, since we bought coats this year.
Twenty-two. I'm sorry. Get out of here again.
Jerry said we could cut that by whatever we spent on jackets that we transferred this year.
So what are we doing on uniforms?
Well, we started the original budget with sixteen, we're up to thirty-seven, and Chris, you're talking about just recently an expense we had?
Yeah, we had transferred for all those jackets that, that we bought, that was fifteen thousand dollars.
It was fifteen?
Roughly. Can you show that, find that somewhere? Or it should be an expense.
Well, we have a.
Wasn't that only half of the jackets?
He said we could cut next year's budget by fifteen thousand dollars or whatever that was.
Off of current?
Off of what he.
The reflective coat.
Debbie, you should have a look in here.
I was gonna get those other transfers.
Oh, no, no.
Did I just make that up, or did I hear that?
I forget what the number is, I didn't write the number down, but they replaced the reflective coats, so we won't need to do that in eighteen. Uh, no new badges, so we can take that out there.
So basically, we could cut it back to sixteen thousand. Which would be last year's budget.
Last year's was.
I mean, the coat should last for four or five years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you would hope.
The last transfer we did was fifteen, one ninety, two fifty-eight.
That's, I think, what it was. That was a reflective coat.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't remember if that was all of them. Jerry's probably listening, sitting in his office, slapping himself.
Oh, Jerry, that, he's. He's taking time off there. Kelly's aunt that she watches over is.
So you think that he can't be watching this anyway?
Oh, he can, but I, he's not in his office watching.
Now you're gonna be specific about it.
How much were the coats?
His office is a mobile office. It could be a hotel. That's his new office today.
They were eight hundred dollars a piece. No, I think they were like two hundred or so.
So then he bought seventy-five coats.
I think there was more than coats in there.
There was other stuff in there, but, uh, I mean, I don't know, he sent us an email on it, didn't he?
I got six million emails. Let's see. EMS. Hey, look, mine are in alphabetical order. I'll have to search everywhere for this stuff. Let's see, budget. Pullovers and coats.
Yeah, their employees, yeah.
Is that, is that what his request was?
Yes. I, I took the badges out, and yes, the rest of that was his request. So he originally asked for thirty-six. Do their badges have their names on them?
Yeah.
They do?
Yeah, for four hundred dollars a piece, they ought to.
I think they're lining gold too.
Well, why didn't we get badges that were like universal, so that you can, like, a sergeant badge or a lieutenant badge that you.
Oh, we got, we got lapel pins for that.
So we just throw away the badge when someone leaves?
I guess they gotta turn it back in, I mean.
Surely you don't have to keep it, like go out and represent yourself.
Well, I think like Marcia, when she retired, I'm sure they let her keep that, so.
So you for sure wanna take the eight thousand that's in there for coats out, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, yeah. I think I, I remember Jerry saying something.
Well, then let's call him and ask him rather than guessing.
Twenty-four would give him where he's at this year, so.
Wait, don't have the phone? Well, I mean, we're doing all this, just like we did with Public Works, we're gonna sit here, and we're gonna redo stuff, and then we're gonna send it to him, and then he's gonna say, well, don't really wanna cut it out here, 'cause I need this, so can we do this? And then we're doing this all for nothing. Once again, exercising for no reason.
But I think this is all up to you, because you guys control these departments.
We can zero it all then, Debbie. Zero it all. And then everything he wants, he's gotta come to us and itemize every one of them. If we want him to cut, we can tell him we want him to cut back to, like we just did Public Works. Let him go through the futile exercise of saying, well, okay, this is what I can do without, this is a want, not necessarily a need, or this is something I can wait until nineteen or until revenues come up. I mean, this fund here is the, probably one of the healthiest ones we got.
Well, we take coats out and you're.
Not as healthy as it used to be, when you're talking to you, one point four is what you would have to transfer.
Well, if you're gonna do it comparatively, then no. We've also, we added a lot of stuff this past year. He came in, we approved that in middle of the year to do a lot of these expenditures. We increased it through the middle of the year. He came in, made some requests when he came in as the new director, it got approved.
Yeah, that's why I don't like disapproving codes or disapproving whatever, I mean, I just. I'd take uniform back even further, I mean, you know, obviously, he's had to buy some uniforms, but everybody should be outfitted. They shouldn't need badges anymore, they shouldn't need coats anymore. He's gotta make do with what he's got. Not increase. But if he needs more uniforms, he needs to come to us and ask for a transfer.
I think the, the big thing is the bottom line here. What are you comfortable with subsidizing that enterprise for? Once you figure out what that number is and that you wanna stay at going forward, then, then he has to work within that total.
I could cover out a million, but that ain't gonna get it.
And we used to be there.
I don't know where he's gonna trim four hundred thousand out of. Besides salaries. Salaries or overtime or.
Their actual activity has the transfer in there, wave the transfer out if wanted.
I mean, we hope that the, the fees we're charging goes up, but if they go down, our.
Contributions.
Our contributions will go even higher than a one point four.
Well, so Debbie, put in the transfer in the one-one oh six where it was in sixteen.
So basically, that's how much we're.
So two hundred and fifty-four, and ninety-four, more than sixteen, but sixteen's accrual, not cash.
Well, but that's what we put in, cash. Right?
What?
Yes, the one, one oh six.
Right. Put that amount in cash, but what we put in in capital?
Scroll down to the bottom.
Six fifty.
Three hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight sixty, no.
Capital in, out of six fifty. That's their depreciation.
Right, there's additional capital expenses.
So what are you saying, is that three fifty-four?
Three ninety-four is the difference between what we gave them last year, and their revenue.
No, I thought you said three fifty-four.
The three fifty-four is their depreciation expense, sorry. I thought their contribution was in there, which is the total amount of their capital from sixteen, but it's not.
How much, how much did we spend in? Well, that wasn't in sixteen. You're looking at sixteen, what we put in at sixteen.
Right, so I just made the transfer in the same as sixteen, so you could see the bottom dollar, the same. The difference is sixteen's on accrual versus, so like, your, your depreciation and your bad debt expense in there is making that seven ninety-five, where that's not in there in eighteen.
So was that the same amount that we put in at seventeen, or?
Seven, seventeen was a little less, you mean the transfer in?
Yes.
Yeah, scroll back up, Debbie. A million thirty-one, I think, so we actually contributed a little less than seventeen.
Okay.
We've been trying to spend down some of their cash forward, 'cause we'd like it to be closer to six, seven hundred thousand dollars. And actually, I think that projected seventeen number's too low, 'cause you got, what, one more payroll to come out?
Yep.
So in seventeen, it showed a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar deficit?
Yeah, but I have a feeling it's gonna be more than that, 'cause you're already currently at a hundred and two.
We're gonna have to go see some transfers going. Again, but there should be in an amount of payroll accounts, once we finish up payroll, if there's enough money. If there's not, then we'll.
So I projected their revenue out to the end of the year, I thought I projected salaries and everything, but he's made some large transfers, like that fifty thousand to uniforms was after I did the budget, so, um, my hundred and twenty-two, their projection is probably low.
What do you think, something?
I got another seven thousand here for medical staff. Uh, what is an average payroll?
Yeah, just click on salaries. I would think you could probably add another seventy-five thousand.
So over two hundred?
I would guess closer to two hundred, yeah.
So that takes its step. Transfer being one point, two, three.
Well, so he has quite a bit of cash forward, so if you take that one, two, three, six cash forward number, subtract off the two hundred thousand, he's still at almost a million tran, cash forward. And right now, we have that contingency out, so.
So that's your offset of cash forward, minus contingency.
So if it was a balanced budget, your cash forward would equal your contingency? And we're saying it's only gonna be seven hundred and five.
Well, that's your projection, that's, that's if it was the one, two, that you're saying, gotta add, take another seventy-five thousand out of that.
Well, she just changed it, so she made the cash forward a million.
I don't know why we can't just have one that says incoming and outgoing.
And that, that carry forward is an estimate at this time, all of these funds.
Hey, Shane, have that in there, delete it, get it out there, transfers in, so we know exactly what we're spending, or what we are bringing in, just have that.
But the whole concept of revenues equals expenses is why we've been taking out contingency and carry forward.
I still leave contingency in there, I, I got it in my budget. I don't have carry forward, I don't designate them looking at the bottom rung, that's like the balance of my checkbook, that's why I carry forward, but when I look at revenues and expenses, that's what it is.
If you take that out, then we gotta, then we gotta hope to carry forward to a million, basically, to keep your contingency at seven or five. It's all about.
Why would you have carry forward in there at all? At the beginning of the year, I'm gonna have a million dollars. So I have a million dollars I can spend. I don't care what the carry forward, if there is carry forward, then that's like your, uh, safety net, whatever you wanna call it.
That's why most of the time, the carry forward should equal your contingency, whatever you're carrying forward should be your contingency amount.
No.
And now if I put that in there, it's the same.
No, it's not, it's, 'cause the contingency just means, well, here's some more for you to spend, and then you start putting it in expense lines, and you spend it that year, but you don't have as much carry forward to next year, but it's still in that expense line. So it skews the budget. I don't, I hate the way we do this, I don't like it at all. You're not looking at the bottom dollar.
If the carry forward equals the contingency, then, I mean, obviously, I get what you're saying, you don't want any contingency in there, or you want very little.
No, I'm fine with the contingency being at whatever dollar it is, but you can't just say, okay, well, carry forward, we had a good year, we didn't spend as much on, on gas, or whatever. So then you spend it the following years, 'cause you put it into training and meetings, but then you don't have as much carry forward to next year.
Well, your carry forward should go up. You don't spend it, your carry forward should increase.
Should stay the same as your contingency, assuming you don't dig into it.
Right, but if you don't, if you don't.
Exactly, don't spend your contingency.
Your carry forward should go up, you should have more money than once you started, not less.
And the big thing is, if you put expenses out there, or one-time expenses, don't hurt you so bad. It's those expenses when you add them to salaries, is what, is an ongoing cost. And so then this deficit keeps growing the other way, unless you find some other kind of revenue to offset.
I think that's what we've been wanting them to achieve, is more revenue in fees or services.
So then it comes down to what amount do you wanna transfer in, and then on the other side, what amount you wanna spend that capital to. But it all comes down to, what, what do you wanna put over in it?
You can say that, but if you take your, you take your carry forward, and you match up your contingency, what choice do we have but to not fully fund it? I mean, we have to put in what they, they have to have, I mean, and unless by some miracle, we're able to staff, our staff is adequate, and we start running all these runs, and our fees go up, I mean, now our revenue's finally catching up.
But I think there are some expenses that you can control.
Oh, I, I agree.
I mean, there's.
So I mean.
But there's, but there's only a limited amount.
Right, I, I don't know that, I mean, adding additional staff beyond what we've already done would be consideration when it comes up, what we've already approved to add is in there. So that's why we were going through the other lines, to kind of see if there was.
And that's why we were.
Places to kind of pull it back down to where we were before.
Right, 'cause that's the point, where we went from before, where we are now, there's a lot of them, we're almost doubling. Until you've made some cutbacks here, too. I mean, yeah, maybe professional service doubled, there's a good excuse, you bought that software that now we have to maintain, you know, but when meetings goes from five hundred to forty thousand, oh, you could control that.
Yeah.
You know. Equipment service, control or not, we bought that stuff, and yet, you know, we have to maintain it now, we went from forty to ninety, to a hundred almost. Those are the things that concern us, as far as.
Well. Yes and no, I mean, you can buy the equipment service contract, or you can decline it.
And you have the laundry, we say, that's good. I mean, we're gonna probably make it up in supplies we have to use to clean our own, and if we're paying people to do that service now, versus before, we pay a contractor to do it, I don't know if we're ahead or not, you know. But it does, it all comes down to where you are comfortable with and what to transfer, and then we can make that department head live within that. Give them the flexibility to live within.
But you're just talking about this fund? I mean, there's all.
All funds.
Well.
All funds that you control.
Right, but I mean, we're talking about enterprise fund here.
Yes.
I mean.
It is different.
So we're talking about a million dollars, or one point four million dollars, or whatever's going into this. Well, that's not what it takes to run the EMS operation, they got capital, too. So that's, you know, and I, I'd like to see what we spent in seventeen, as far as capital, 'cause I imagine that's an astronomical number.
Do they have the department in there you need to take out?
Seventeen, or, okay, yeah, part of that is the rollback part, yeah.
Well, so if you add together capital improvements in the ambulance, we're at seven hundred and twenty, thirty thousand?
Forty.
Spent this year.
Seven forty.
Yeah.
Five oh seven, two thirty-three.
Yes. Well, so I don't really consider the nine one one, or the first responders, that kind of stuff, I mean, if you just take the capital improvements in the ambulance.
What's the professional services in there?
That was paramedics plus contractor.
Yeah.
So you had that, too?
Seven hundred and sixty.
So eight hundred and forty thousand dollars, oh, we only spent sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine.
Another seventy, to the two, to the seven forty, so eight hundred and ten dollars.
So you're right, you spend the eight ten, and then you add it to the one point, whatever we already transferred.
Next year, that amount's down, though. And he did.
It's gonna go down a lot further, too.
Well, and he did say, what were his changes to that?
Yeah, we don't even need to talk about that, I'm about to know on every one of his capital requests.
So take out the cash forward and contingency here. That's what his capital request is then?
It's a big.
Surplus?
Million two thousand. Surplus?
Yep.
That's just based on what the projected sales tax income is, correct?
Yeah, that's currently flat to where we are this year. And that was, yeah, if you change that transfer amount, that has to change.
That's all that's, so basically, that's all that's left, after his capital requests are in there. So we made, there's a million dollars left, which is what should go to the enterprise fund.
No, the transfer.
No, that transfer's already in there.
No.
The million, it's at a million dollars right now, so that includes a million dollar transfer.
So, so it could be two, but. So you're right.
Could be.
But with what those requests were, is that a negative?
Hey, click on the activity for sales tax, why is that not matching? That one, sales tax at the top, five, six, four, five. Oh, 'cause you're getting out of here. Go up to your options at the top. And change, click that last box. Nope, bottom.
Don't really keep it careful, like, all the time?
Yeah, so.
I'll just start it off like we did. Is that right? I wonder what that, your number was there, what's that?
We received some interest for the first time in lots of years on sales tax.
Other than from Harrow?
Right.
So what else do we need to look at? Done the enterprise fund, there's some other.
I mean, if you're wanting, obviously, you have control over what gets bid and what doesn't, and if you want these things out here, or if you want them to stay there.
We can talk about that now if we want, or?
And he changed some of those requests when he came in for his. And did you change those?
Did he have a list?
Well, you added the scoop stretchers and the airway thing, he took the stair chairs out, did you take that out there? Go up. Yes, um, and then in the ambulance side, he took out the transit van and wanted to do two QRVs instead. So you need to add a line, two QRVs at seventy-five.
I'm a no on that, so we'll not even add it.
Transit. Transit van. Two QRV. So you're a no to the transit and to the QRVs?
Yep.
Okay, anybody else?
For what?
Are you okay with two transit vans, or two QRVs, or no?
What about them?
He decided he wanted that instead of a transit van, do you wanna put two QRVs in there?
I thought we had three QRVs already.
We do, we want to replace two. And I think.
Now we're on capital?
Yeah.
I had anyone fucking with that.
Maybe we're not even using the transit van that we got. I asked for mileage on all.
I don't want the transit van, I'm gonna take that out.
Asked for mileage on all those, but I think even the two older QRVs don't have that many miles on them. Did you get that?
Yeah, I got his, I just don't have.
Uh, it'd be a Tahoe.
A two Explorer.
Tahoe, we're at it. Right here, sixty-six thousand.
Two Explorers.
There's a conversion thing, I think that is, that's.
That's the transit.
Is that the transit van?
Yes.
Two thousand miles on it.
Here's another Tahoe.
I don't know, so.
Pickup, here's a pickup.
So the Ford Explorer at the top's at fifty eight, and the newest Explorer's at twelve.
And we're only putting on here, you can see what was in sixteen, fifteen. If we had that vehicle in sixteen.
Which one? I can't read all that.
The Ford Explorer, the two thousand ten Ford Explorer. And seventeen, we had fifty eight thousand miles on it, and sixteen, we had forty two thousand miles on it. So we put on sixteen thousand miles. And the Tahoe.
And there's the year before that, I'm sorry.
Did you quit moving it?
Just trying to give you the whole picture.
You're giving me a whole headache. I'm finally figuring out where sixteen and seventeen were and not moving shit. Okay.
So from thirty five to sixty six.
What happened to the two thousand ten one we had up there?
That's the right one there.
Well, this is a Tahoe.
You highlight that whole line there.
There. There's a Tahoe.
So the Tahoe goes from twenty five thousand to thirty five thousand.
To sixty six.
Why we'd want to replace that, I have no idea.
Where's the ten?
We did put on quite a few more miles on the Tahoe from sixteen, seventeen.
That one probably was leaving it there unless it's breaking down.
That one's got thirty five thousand miles on it.
No, sixty six.
Sixty six on it now. It still lasts another year. Where's the third one at?
The Explorer.
Random, it's got what?
That one.
That one?
Twelve thousand.
Okay, I don't see any. It doesn't even need to be replaced.
Okay, so you're a no on replacing QRVs.
Yes.
Are you?
That's fine.
Okay.
No, I think. Yeah, I want to give Jerry the benefit of the doubt, but I want to see some of the changes we've made. I want to see them produced, so.
Go to capital. I know, go to the actual capital. So roll down. So that reverse nine one one, that's what?
Bill four.
Bill four wanted.
Could pull them out, right?
Right. Do we want to keep that in here?
I don't think, I think that should come out of that fund, but I don't think that should come out of, be one of his capital requests.
You could put it up in nine one one, I guess.
It's kind of your capital. I mean, whatever. So he doesn't have access to approved bills to come out here. Does that make sense? These are all yours.
Well, but when he sees it approved in there, then thinks that it's spent. I just like, I think it should be up by another nine one one system.
I think I have it in ours right now.
Yeah, I'd put it.
Wasn't it in the sheriff's or?
Well, we've been in here with emergency services, and that's what we're in, right?
Well, that's fine, but she's just, she's got the nine one one system up there. And I don't, I guess I don't care.
Well, but this is emergency services. It's not just ambulance. So right now, the way we're looking at this is just the ambulance capital. Right?
This is the EMS sales tax.
Emergency services sales tax.
Right, right.
It's not EMS.
Right, emergency services.
So that's all.
So you could put it in there, too? What we pay for the regular nine one one?
If you take it out of there, where are we gonna put it?
Right.
Just right there with the nine one one.
Same fund, just in the nine one one.
Okay.
So it's still coming out of the same fund, and just you could put it up in the nine one one.
Okay.
Eighteen thousand, did you put it up there? So are you, what about the other items? Scoop stretchers, airway trainer, radios, pediatric system, airway devices, child restraint system?
I'm gonna need a Jeffers restraint system in a minute.
Sixteen thousand.
That's eleven, and then five for the airway trainer. It was sixteen total.
Yeah, I think that's all for our ambulances, I think.
What's, what's the radio equipment? Is that for handhelds, like?
Yeah.
One?
Yes.
Update the most one.
Better five or six thousand dollars apiece.
Yes.
One per ambulance, one per?
Yeah.
Is that what it is, Debbie?
Yeah. Is there anything on this attachment here that would tell me?
I don't think so. That's sixteen. That's just his email that he sent originally?
It's one quarter to ten. Only. We haven't got anything done. It's already quarter to ten.
Well, I think we're done with capital now, unless you guys, if you want.
No, no, we're not done with capital.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
What do you mean done with capital? We just made it through one thing.
Well, I mean, there's not too many ones.
Oh, two things. I'm sorry. We got the SUV thing, and then we also got the nine one one thing. Now we got the other forty two.
So I'd like to know more about this hand Debbie pediatric system. I tried to look that up. I'd know what that entails. I'm concerned that we're getting a lot of things that are bells and whistles that, you know. Yes, yes.
Yeah. And then we better know how to use them, too, so that adds to training.
And then this, this King Vision airway devices, there's also some medical supplies that go with that. And, and probably a service contract with that, too, because I think it's a computer. So anyway, just need more information on that. If that's, we obviously have something that works. But we don't always need the latest or greatest. And then the ACR child restraint system. So there's a, that's like the best one that they make, and it's color toted, and it has all kinds of flashy, shiny objects on it. And that one's like fifteen hundred dollars apiece. And they make some of that for a hundred and fifty dollars apiece.
I thought he was only getting like one of those.
Eight thousand dollars per truck. I took notes.
It was eight thousand per truck?
No, thousand dollars per truck.
Oh.
Eight thousand, so once eight of them.
So why would we need eight of those and eleven scoop stretchers?
There should be eleven.
Here again, I don't know why we need eleven at any one time. We only use seven ambulances. And so all of this stuff can be moved from one ambulance to the next very easily. Just like the Lucas devices.
So your suggestion here would be?
Well, I mean, I looked at scoop stretchers, too, so obviously, the best and the greatest scoop stretcher that's on the market is what we're gonna buy. And there's other ones out there that are unfortunate with the price, so.
Well, and the part about needing eleven or twelve of them, too, is debatable. You know, we can start with one or two. You can have them at the station if you know there's a spinal injury. You've got three SUVs that can load it up and take it out there. Because by the time they get them stabilized and stuff, they're not gonna be moving them that quick. So I don't think it's a bad idea to have it. Now, to have the top of the line one, that's something we can discuss, too.
And I will say the Deluxe Advanced Airway Trainer, I think, is kind of a, it's a training device, a kind of a full-size dummy that you will, I mean.
Full-size Debbie? What? Oh, full-size dummy, I'm sorry.
I mean, I am okay with that.
Sorry.
I love you, Debbie. When you get served papers for, for mental abuse. We're just gonna say, we're gonna say, yeah, we.
Bring it on. Bunch of snowballs.
Or snowblakes, whatever.
There are a few items that aren't listed in here that he had requested in his other budget that I cut out. So like a badge reader for dispatch, traction splints, burst in bags, that elk lift cushion, office chairs, and dispatch furniture upgrade.
And I'm okay with, I'm okay with bidding some of those. The, the elk lift cushion, I think, could be beneficial, and he was only talking about having one of those.
So elk lift cushion.
Elf, we got elfs.
The.
So you guys do approve this, just like you do sales tax capital improvement, so even though you're putting a list out here, and they would have to come to you to get it approved before they bid it, so. Putting kind of a placeholder in here doesn't necessarily mean that, yes, you're going to buy it.
No, but I don't think people realize that.
Explain that, yeah, we need to explain that.
Because I think people go out, I mean, obviously, any of these that are under the bid requirement, or they can do them on purchase.
They should have approval from you before they go buy.
Should. Should's keyword, Kristen.
Especially in this budget, because he has no control.
Are you going to HBA tonight?
All you have to do is tell.
We're gonna sit in opposite rooms, aren't we? I'm gonna sit with Andy, though.
So are you, are you moving that, or?
Well, she just backed in the list in here, and you guys tell us if you want to put it in there or not.
Chris, they're not even listening to us, I don't think, so. I think they're just doing what they want to do. We're just here for eye candy.
I'm okay with looking at the badge reader, but thirty five hundred dollars for a badge reader to have access to the dispatch thing is ridiculous. I mean, it's like a, at most, a fifteen hundred dollar deal. I mean, it's basically access control in and out of the dispatch center.
So you just tell us if you want to take them out, then the list is all in there?
Everything's in there.
So hundred and seven would be.
We weren't, we weren't eighteen eight before I just added.
Right. I'm okay with leaving everything else in there. I just don't want explanations and prior approval when we purchase anything.
Have to pass out one.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It is.
Kind of always talking about the bags, and I think that's something you've got to do.
Why?
Because the other ones are.
They got bags. It's just like when you're growing up, you got shoes that have a hole in it, you have to use them for a little longer, because mom and dad had to either feed you or clothe you, so you're like, well, I got clothes. It's got a hole in it, and I can live with it for another month.
Put a patch on it.
Patch it up. I, duct tape, whatever we had to do.
Didn't go on my bags.
So right now, we got a hundred and seven thousand in capital.
We used to put them bread bags on our feet to keep them from getting wet from our snow boots.
No idea. Your boots were no longer waterproof, you put.
Is there anything else you guys want to talk about in that capital? Otherwise, we think that was it.
How much are we gonna have in capital to spend? I mean, we're sitting here with this list, but we don't even know what we have to spend. I usually start with what I have to spend first and work backwards, so maybe I'm just backwards that way.
You had about a million dollars to spend.
But what, what is your vision going forward? What do you want to?
Well, we had, we had a million dollars remaining after we funded the enterprise fund by what? One point four.
Well, a million.
But they still have a deficit.
Okay, so that million, that million that we have there is, that gonna be just from this year? Or is that carried forward, cash forward, contingency, all this other fancy schmancy bells and whistle stuff y'all throw in there on me?
It will just go to contingency from whatever vision you have, if you don't spend it this year.
Okay, so when we need to start doing remounts and stuff. It'll be there. But it'll disappear real fast when we start doing new ambulances, remounts, motors.
So that's, that's what we'll have.
But you currently have two million coming into the year. So you have two million in there, plus you're going to gain a million during the year. So at the end of the year, we're projecting that you would be at three million.
Assuming Sam's tax date.
Okay, I guess that's what I'm asking is.
So we're gonna gain a million even after we spend a hundred and seven thousand dollars in capital?
Yes. Now, that number could change if you change your transfer into the other fund, but that's where you're at right now with a million dollars going into the enterprise fund.
But that's probably not enough to make them whole unless they spend down some of their cash.
Right. We have the option to take a year and spend down some cash and reevaluate again next year.
But what the operation is costing us is about one point four.
Yes.
Without capital, yes.
Right. So we're gonna spend down four hundred in cash. Right?
Assuming you care for it.
Unless you want to change this to one point four.
Yes.
The sales tax brings in, I'm just using the five and a half million. Forty percent of that goes towards the EMS, our emergency services, correct?
Yes.
That'd be two point two million. And we're taking one point four million to fund the operation, right?
Well, one for the enterprise and then whatever capital.
I thought you said we had one point fours, what we?
Well, that's what we're talking about. Whether you want to do a million this year and spend down some of their reserves, or do you want to make that transfer one point four?
The deficit was one point four. Take the cash, cash and the contingency out, the deficit was one point four.
But they also have a million dollars in cash forward.
Right.
But we also spent about four hundred thousand more last year than we've spent years before.
Yes. That's why we were going through to decide if you wanted to cut some of their expenses to bring them back down.
I mean, it makes more sense to spend down some of their cash. Well, you think you're gonna spend down some of their cash. I mean, obviously, if their services are in more need, and they do more. Stuff for people, then their fees are gonna go up, which is where we'd like for it to be. Increase their fees, decrease the amount required from the transfer.
And then by mid-year of eighteen, it'll give you a good look at what the fees are gonna be.
Yeah. I mean, we knew we were gonna spend money this year, because we brought Jerry in to make changes, and he, he, he's made a lot of changes.
I said make changes. That's the thing about spending money.
Yeah. But I think, I think in twenty eighteen, I think in twenty eighteen, we need to see the benefit of, of these changes.
You can put makeup on a pig, it's still a pig. So we can throw all kinds of money and stuff.
Well, but I, it's. You know.
So. Are we okay with the one million in the transfer?
Well, so she's pulling the enterprise fund back up. We can look at anything else and get that down, too.
I'm okay with the million in the transfer, but we don't need to be spending down the cash reserves. I'm okay with the million in the transfer, but we don't need to be spending down the cash reserves.
Well, so here's, here's my deal, is right now, their cash port's one point two, so they have a reserve in there that they're carrying forward of more than we've been subsidizing in the past.
Right, we had one point six in there to start seventeen, right?
No, one point six.
Two thousand seventeen amended budget says one point six here. Cash forward. Says one point six, seven, two, oh, one, nine. And around two thousand twelve, it was at about four hundred thousand.
This is the enterprise, we're back to the enterprise fund, you're in the sales tax fund.
Alright, so we were at one point one in sixteen, one in seventeen. Then when you're talking about spending that down, what are you talking about spending it down to? Oh, that's transfer in, never mind, so you're going from one point two to you're gonna spend it down three hundred thousand almost, or quarter million?
Well, right now, it's what, four hundred thousand? Yeah, if I only give them a million, they gotta take the four hundred thousand out of their cash, which means they have four hundred thousand less out of their contingency.
Basically, we would have to put this in at about a million, and then put their contingency at six hundred thousand.
Okay, so that's because we spent more in seventeen, we did a lot, we made a lot of changes, right?
And we're spending down the reserves.
So then, what's it gonna do in eighteen?
I would say in eighteen, because we'll have to grow a little bit.
What, that's what I'm not understanding, what y'all are putting in there, you take out cash forward, take out everything, I just wanna know what we're gonna spend?
So.
And what we have coming in.
So right now, you're spending one point four, one million, four hundred thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
On expenditures.
More than revenue, if he, if the revenue transfer is a million.
Oh, fuck, now here we go, now just, now he cost me a dollar.
This fund costs us one point four million dollars, less all the revenue that they collect from other sources.
What are we, we're gonna spend, one point four million?
Yes.
Okay. And we've got.
Plus capital, that comes out of a different fund.
So.
But we've got permits and fees, we got three and a half million projected to come in. So then we're two and a half million in the block.
No.
Okay, so then where, where am I losing, you all, where y'all losing me at? How much are we gonna spend this year?
With what we have to spend and with what we.
Their total budget expenditures is four point nine.
Okay, y'all just said one point four.
One point four is the difference between.
I didn't say difference, I said how much are we gonna spend this year, how much is the ambulance gonna cost us to run this year? Our salaries are like two and a half million, two million.
It's that forty-nine, twenty-nine, plus another hundred and seven thousand coming out of capital, so that would be what the ambulance is gonna cost us, so it's gonna be five million.
So we're at about five million.
Over five million. We're five million, thirty-five thousand dollars. Roughly, right?
That's what we have on this budget. What line are you looking at, the five million?
Basically.
I see a bunch of bottom numbers.
Forty-nine, twenty-nine is what's coming out of this fund.
Okay, so when I said the five million, where are y'all getting the five, six million or whatever you're saying?
Adding the capital of a hundred and seven.
I'm not, no, capital don't, we don't have to spend the capital, we don't have to buy them cots and stuff, so I'm leaving capital completely out of it.
Four point nine.
To operate EMS, we're looking at right around five million, right?
Yeah.
And revenues are gonna be?
Three point five.
Three point five. So then, we gotta cut another half million out yet.
We're gonna transfer over a million at this point.
Right, we're still half a million dollars short.
Right, and so our carry forward is going to be around a million. Usually, we try to keep carry forward and contingency the same, but this year, we're talking about moving contingency down, and we only have a reserve of about six hundred thousand. So basically, that would solve the, that would balance the budget. We put a million in here, and then the contingency would be six hundred thousand. Then going forward, and in nineteen, we would hope that carry forward and contingency will be more on the same level.
But you're still spending more, how you gonna cut that back next year?
We're spending the reserves this year, you know, you're just gonna have to transfer it out of.
Well, no.
You're gonna have to transfer it next year too then.
Either that or you have to cut it out this year, or we're also.
Exactly, that's what we need.
Yeah, I'm banking on, I'm banking on the revenue going up.
If the revenue doesn't go, the revenue doesn't go up, then we gotta cut personnel?
No, we're, we're, I mean, we've, we've made all the changes.
So then why don't you just change revenue to four million instead of three and a half?
Cause. No, no, we're.
The rates don't change, so Dan.
But you're hoping it does.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping I'm gonna get a Henry rifle for Christmas, but.
That's like me going and buying this Henry rifle, but I don't have the money yet. Cause I think I'm gonna get paid and have a couple jobs.
But we're not, we're not, we're not looking like there's gonna be a rainbow that's gonna bring us something for me.
I'm hoping I win the lottery next year, so I'm gonna go buy me a Corvette.
And Chris, you hit it on the head.
Can I have one too?
Cut back to make that.
I don't, I don't like this at all. I think it needs to be cut back. If you're spending a half million into the carry forward.
Where do you want to set it up at?
That's setting a bad precedent.
Where you gonna take it from?
How did we get to the carry forward to one point four million, and then now we're gonna be dropping back to six hundred thousand?
We got there because we had, we had years where our budget was more than our expense, and so we accumulated cash. And so, you know, whether we gave them.
But now we're spending about twice that, and we're cutting into the cash forward that bad.
Yeah.
I can see this year, cause we've made a bunch of changes, and we added a whole bunch of stuff, and.
Well, we added six people, and then this year's budget is four more. Right.
Well, when we had revenues that were coming in at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month, we were close to where we needed to be, but really, in actuality, our revenue needs to be four hundred thousand dollars a month.
Well, that's not even three hundred.
Well, I realize that.
Drop it back down to two fifty.
So we thought all these, you know, we had this call volume and all this other stuff, and so according to that call volume, we should be getting four hundred thousand dollars a month, well, now it's dropped off, it could drop off even more, and so now you're looking at maybe even reducing staff.
Click on that fee, so we, I think, we have everything figured out then, right? So the projection for this year for fees is even a little high. We figure two, somewhere between two fifty and two seventy, on top of right now, we're at three million ninety-six.
That's an average.
That's what it's been probably the last four months.
Two fifty.
Yeah, and there's two thirty there, no, there was higher, three, three fourteen, oh, point three eighteen, but it's kinda back to where it was. There's three, there's three.
Our lowest month of the year was September, which was after we changed our fees.
What was our highest month, three twenty-eight?
Three twenty-eight.
Which was June for seats.
I mean, so if, if our revenue doesn't go back up.
The second round, yes.
We have to reduce staff. We have to figure out what that window is, or we have to figure out a way to have people on call, or whatever that might be, but.
We'd made all the changes, and it was supposed to actually, we added people, but we were supposed to be reducing overtime, so that should have been like a zero, zero change in the box.
But everything.
If you're looking at two thousand sixteen, four point eight million, now we're going to five point six million for two thousand eighteen?
Everything you saved in overtime went to either part-time or salary?
No, a lot of, no, a lot of it. Just hear me out, Debbie.
Okay, I'm looking it up there.
Cause Jerry explained that to us too, we should see a difference in that, in eighteen, because of, a lot of it was training the new people. So you had a lot, you still had a lot more in salary and time doing that stuff. So, that should make a difference. But I'm right here in this book, we're spending eight hundred thousand more than we did last year in eighteen, or to say, I'm sorry, the two thousand sixteen activity was four point eight million, and now we're at five point six. And if you look across all this, there's, everything is, it's increased substantially.
Where are you getting the five point six at?
Two thousand eighteen.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I'm just going off, I, if I look up there, it'd drive me nuts, cause by the time I find it, Debbie clicks to another screen.
So that's what you got originally, Kristen, is that right? It was five point six, so.
Yes.
And there's such a big difference between what you have and what we have over there, commission.
I'm sorry, cause I got.
You have cash.
Contingency out of it.
Okay, so take the five point six minus the seven hundred thousand. That brings it to four point nine, which is a lot closer to the two thousand sixteen activity. So that's where the difference is?
Yes.
The cash.
What was the contingency in two thousand sixteen then?
Budget?
Was it out of there?
Well, activity, we didn't spend anything out of contingency, so it's gonna be zero, you have to look at the budget to find out if you're missing that one.
Cause you don't have cash or contingency in the sixteen activity, is that right?
Right.
So is there somewhere else you want to cut money? Do you have their insurance numbers updated currently?
Yes. And there's? Ten thousand more here. That's not in there.
I was gonna say, he asked for another fifteen thousand in medical supplies. Are you moving in another fifty-five?
It's about worth, that's gonna end up this year.
Gonna end up the what?
Hundred fifty-five.
What was he asking for?
He was asking for a hundred and seventy-five, or a hundred and seven, fifteen thousand more.
I don't think cost of medical supplies can go down.
Yeah, that one, I.
He said one fifty-five?
He said the volume's gonna stay the same, the increase in cost is gonna be about ten percent.
Activity, you add another, he's gonna be at one fifty-four.
And then add ten percent. So that's where we was coming up with the one seventy, cause.
I almost think that one, you're just asking for him to have to come back, cause.
We just did that the other day though, and I didn't see, was there that big of an increase in the cost? That's what I thought.
So it's all about volume for some reason?
No, he said volume's gonna be the same, cost was gonna increase ten percent.
I don't know, probably went from one thirty-two to one fifty-four in one year.
No, he's saying the volume for seventeen to eighteen's gonna stay the same, I don't know what the volume for sixteen to seventeen was. If we're making more calls or not, I don't know on that part, but for seventeen to eighteen, the volume would stay the same, but costs were gonna increase ten percent is what, is what I've got now. Well, one fifty-five, so fifteen five to one fifty-five be one seventy, that's where we had the one seventy number, he had one seventy-five in there. We were kicking around one seventy at some point.
Yes. Okay, let's look at some others, go down.
So are we doing one seventy, or, I mean, is that what you just decided, or what? I'm just kicking around numbers and telling you why we had one seventy or one seventy-five in there. I think Chris was saying that there wasn't any increases in it whenever we did the bids, was that last week? Is that the same thing?
Yesterday.
It was yesterday.
So was that the same, same line item, or same, that's the one we're talking about?
Yep, the one that they wanted boundary, that they buy all their medical supplies from, or ninety percent of their medical supplies from.
Sam, how much you want?
I, I, I'm okay with one seventy.
Chris?
I'll just do it at one fifty-five.
Somewhere in between, Jeff?
Can't reduce it.
If, if the bids came in yesterday and there was not a ten percent increase, then I think at whatever level we're gonna be at this year. Cause he said volume's gonna stay the same, so if the costs are the same as what we had last year. If the costs increase, then we're gonna have to go up.
All the supplies are up, but that's, I don't.
Yeah, but if he, if he's running more calls, then his, then his fee should go up, so she's gonna, she'll have plenty more money for the medical supplies he's using.
I, I totally agree. If all this other stuff is going up, then, yeah.
You wanna look at fuel?
I think fuel is what it is, I mean, I keep basing it on what we've used before, and we use the amounts that, or the prices that.
We're at seventy to, this year, he's got ninety-five in there next year. Look at his activity, has he paid November?
We had a hundred in there for seventeen, so. I'm going down for seventeen, that's probably one of the few that went down. From seventeen to eighteen.
So what do we sign on medical supplies?
In sixteen though, was fifty-six thousand.
One fifty-five.
But they just transferred out of fuel for some of the other items, just had a shell, is that right?
Well, so the hundred and was the original budget, and then ninety-seven, and then if she has more, so. The.
Five thousand and half.
Well, the fuel report, I mean, we got it, tells exactly what they're using.
So V ninety-two is where he's gonna end up this year?
Two thousand seventeen.
They transferred out of tires.
So tires, actually, the budget went, went down. He was at 18, then he went to 11. But look at parts, we went from 14 to, to 56. Click on that one Debbie. I'm not sure, so he has the engine and transmission replacements, I'm not sure that we should budget that.
Well, I'm not sure that we should budget for contract parts either. I don't know what that is.
Well, that's his agreement with, uh... Who does it, I'm sorry, I was...
Are we not on fuel anymore?
No, we're parts.
What do we decide on fuel? Y'all are worse than me. Y'all are jumping around like jumping bees.
Do you wanna change fuel? You're the one who said it is what it is.
We never decided that, so now I get to decide?
Sure, yeah.
You said it was down from...
We're at...
So you were, that's, you said that's one of the few things that's gonna be down?
Well, the request is, projected was 75,000, which is up 20,000 over 16's activity. But if we're making more calls, then...
That 70,000 should be done. He won't pay December until January, so that should be the total for the year.
36% increase, is what you got budgeted?
What are we talking about now?
We're buying a lot of fuel outside of the...
Are we back on fuel now?
Just for you? Based on actual this year, to what he once budgeted, it's a 36% increase. Do you feel that's okay or not? I mean, not okay, but do you think he's gonna have that much more volume on his?
Fuel usage out there at, on that report, that one that you sent me Chris, I mean, it's, it's 6,000 a month.
Yeah, it's 33,000 gallons, is what he used in.
Yeah, they don't have December on it, does it?
December won't be paid till January?
So...
So even at 6,000, that's 7,000, 2,000 a year, but we're at 95.
How many gallons is that? 36,000 gallons?
Just whatever you just said, that 6,000?
So about 3,000 gallons a month is what we're looking at?
Yep.
So...
And it just varies depending on price fluctuation, because...
As I say, if it goes up 10 cents or 20 cents. Or it goes down, for that matter.
That's a pretty cheap fuel, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna have to go California, sit down, you know, for a little...
Well, some Catholic cartels, sticking it to the man. I know I should have bought a gas station. How, I don't know, we, we're using so much more than we did like in 16, and I don't know.
The fuel, the fuel costs were less than in 16.
Hell, I thought this was a good year. Was it that good in 16?
Well, it was, I mean, you just gotta keep in mind, a couple of years ago, gasoline jumped up there.
Yeah, I think we've had a 369, we've had a... Two years ago.
In 16, we were paying, you know, a lot closer to that $2 mark, even over $2 a couple of times. In 17, we were at a $1.30 something in first part of the year, and basically about a $1.60. So our costs went down, probably an average of 40 cents a gallon.
Even at 80 versus current, that's still a 14% increase. I don't know if prices would fluctuate that much difference, with 14% total? Because the other way was more like, what, 35, did I say?
Look at their activity there, Debbie.
They're about 6, they had a bigger, about 34 here. Our November's, oh, I'm sorry. How many, 1, 2, 3? 10? Got 10 on there, I don't know, wait.
Okay, so is that, is that November's there?
Yeah.
This one was December of 16.
Okay.
Should have, June.
Okay, so, uh, right? So that big one right in the middle, that's July, right? That's probably done in June.
That's June's bill paid in July.
Right. I mean, those, those are activity in June.
I can click on it, is this one you're talking about?
Well, I just, just one of those, so I'm just kinda talking here, but anyway, so we were almost $7,000 in fuel. Well, keep in mind, we, we were running a lot in June, July, that time period, and that's when our revenues were the most. They were at $328,000.
But that revenue is probably 90 to 100 days lagged to it, so you weren't seeing, you weren't seeing that month's revenue.
Okay, well, that makes it even worse. So you're saying, so...
You were probably seeing March's revenue in July.
So you're saying that the...
I'm only seeing 11 payments yet. That's probably why, I mean, you count, Kristen?
What did they not pay?
I don't know.
So anyway, we're gaining the most revenues when our fuel costs are down, and then...
It's July, June, May.
And then we get to November, our highest fuel cost of the whole year.
There's April, March.
And our revenues are almost at the worst. But even if you take that back...
Look at November though.
60, 90 days, I mean, November's...
Is that October?
November's revenues would equal...
It's October.
I don't know, something's on that.
Because you paid December, June, so they're missing a month yet? They didn't pay November, or October.
Is there two months in there in November?
No.
So even if you add, okay, so we add another, what was it, about 7,000 worth of, 77,000 for a normal year? Then maybe we should go up a little bit. I don't know why that other bill ain't in there, now they're gonna hit us next year.
We need to call, she can still get it out Friday.
Well, that, we're getting another transfer.
No, they said, if you only took five out, they should still have 92.
So 70, I said 77,000, what do you wanna put on there? How much would 14 be?
88?
88?
That would be with the 11.
And that's a 14% increase.
I would say take it to 90, but my vote doesn't count.
So what are you saying?
It's 90 instead of 95? Because I do think there's a one month out there we need to get paid yet this year. They have to check for a month payment.
Did I read in that report on Jeff, on the fuel? 16 and 17 there?
Which part, I was, I mean, I'm looking at 17, and it's showing about 3,000 gallons per month on average, some months over and under.
I was just looking at the cost.
Uh, well, it doesn't have the December cost in there, I think is why it looks a little... I think it's gonna end up being 72,000, 73,000 probably. And I think if we, you know, looked at it and said, okay, well, 75,000, but if it goes up this year, you know, 20 cents a gallon, we don't have enough in there, so we don't have to do transfers. So we could go up to 80,000.
Yeah, so the price was up at 17 versus 16.
I might, the 2016 one doesn't have the total for the year, I don't think.
Yeah, it was like 33,000 gallons.
Oh, there it is. So...
Scroll over to the right.
So we're up, we're up a good chunk, but we also been trying to capture as many transfers as we can and stuff, so...
And we're running QRVs a lot more than... A QRV never used to.
Yeah, but those are just diesel gallons. That doesn't count the QRV.
Okay.
So the QRVs, uh, were 26,000 gallons.
So that's gonna put us at, well, there's 70,000 just for 76, 81, that's gonna put us over 80,000 for the year. I'd say we're probably gonna meet, I'd say 90's gonna probably be what we're gonna meet, need to be at. Is that what you're kicking around? Boss?
Yeah, she has 90 in there.
Oh, well, it just took us longer to get to it, sorry.
That's good though, that's good. We gotta be on the same page?
Yeah.
Well, that's the last time.
Parts. Parts, let's go to parts then.
Is everybody good with 90?
Yeah.
Are you good with 90?
90 in fuel?
Yeah, instead of 95?
Yep.
Yeah.
90, 90?
Go on.
Yeah.
Okay, take a break.
Take a break?
Take a break.
Oh, shoot.
Parts, parts, parts. Parts had a lot because they wanna do that fuel system. And that, wouldn't we maybe take that out of capital? I'd rather take the fuel system, the card thing or whatever they're talking about.
Actually.
I'd rather take that out of capital. Because you put that in parts, and that's...
Increases their parts budget.
And then next year, we're gonna have to take it back.
Well, that engine and transmission replacement is kind of like a placeholder, I don't know that it needs to stay...
That's what you're talking about, right?
No, the...
No.
The fuel system's only 3,000.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, to put on...
I don't know what that reading has to do with it.
Okay, what was the other one, the transmission, that's just a placeholder for how much? 30,000? 15,000?
Right.
So I mean, one-time expenditures should be paid out of capital.
If it increases the value, if it increases the life of them by five years?
Life of what?
The capital, if you're opinion. If it increases the life of what you're using it for, that's what I was supposed to... And that, then you consider it capital.
Well, but that's, that fuel system hardware is just like a plug-in device that just goes in the vehicle that reads...
And they have it for five years, I mean...
Well, yeah, I mean, you take it out of the vehicle and put it in another vehicle.
Yeah.
That's how I...
That's, I, yeah, I guess transferable, we can... We sell the ambulance, we can...
I'd have it out of capital, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on order today.
Huh? I think we'd get done a lot quicker.
Is that a done deal, or is that something?
Yeah, I think they've already started it, so... Thank you.
Is it 3,000 or is it just 4,000?
It's 3,000, it's, uh, no, it's only like a couple hundred dollars a vehicle. Good. It's caramel.
Sea salt, it's caramel. They're delicious.
Sam?
I'm looking for some great candy.
Uh, these are good.
I don't know what happened to some of them.
They should melt together.
Don't be changing stuff while we're going. More watch the video when I get back. If I want soda?
No, thanks.
No, thank you.
If you walk down the street and get found, I'll take you up on that.
And the soda fund did real well for the Christmas party.
How much do I, the soda, the court soda?
Debbie, did I do the transfer right? No, I was just bringing it up.
Oh, I thought the...
No, we just wanted to know, because I haven't posted yet.
No, that's, or the courthouse soda.
Yeah.
So tell me what your tip? Yeah, I thought it was different. We give like 500, 11, 250s. About 450s.
I thought it was saying courthouse soda.
No, that's the ones that you give the Christmas party.
Gotcha. Down with fuel? So I can close this?
Yes.
Awesome.
Hey, did the medical supplies stuff, have we renewed that?
Good answer.
Medical supplies, that we just did yesterday? I don't know if they went up from where they were years past, it was like 330 items?
Do you have a net list yet?
Say, um... So it was a total in bid, it wasn't just... Yes, right. Usually you can sell that. Yeah, usually if we do, with Jerry, I think he would wanna, he wanted to go out again, we had one more renewal. So usually, yeah, I'll have them identify particular items, that went up, but this year it was a regular bid. I was thinking it was just your... No, that's how my... Now you have to put your question on.
Yeah.
We done yet?
Yeah.
Yeah?
We're still, we're still on, so...
I was done about 7:30 this morning. What?
No, she...
Oh, I thought you were going mad, I didn't know.
You want chocolate?
Did you get chocolates from someone? Sure.
You want chocolate?
It's unhealthy.
'Tis the time.
Well, they're kinda stuck together, too.
Maybe.
She hasn't even offered me, I, no, no.
You were in here, I didn't.
Yeah, but nobody offered me any.
That's what you get for being nice, don't be so nice to people.
Okay, we worked apart.
Is that your goal?
And I thought I heard a consensus of taking that fueled system hardware out of here and putting it into capital, so I did do that. Jeff, Sam?
I agree.
Is that all right?
Yes. Yes.
Anything else in there, parts that you wanna talk about?
Take out the engine transfer.
You guys good with that?
One or two?
Well, I wouldn't put it in our budget, cause it, it's just a, that would be more contingency than me. If it happened, we can take it out of contingency or even capital.
Yeah.
She should have never brought it down.
Um, you know, that puts it more in line, we were at.
You want some ore speed? It's good, it's got like.
Do you have any deer jerky?
Oh, not here, I need to make some more.
You should bring some.
Holding out on it, you wanna bring us some good stuff?
Dylan, text. Make some deer jerky for me when you get home Friday. Send, thank you.
Okay, so fees, we don't really have a lot of control.
Yeah, give me fifty bucks so I can go buy stuff.
Fees is based on the amount of money we collect, that's the fee to quick med claims, computer services is based on our cost allocation study. Transfer fund should be three percent of revenue, it's probably wrong at the moment.
So, uh, computer, let's talk about computers for a minute, so obviously Kevin had an upgrade on his computers or something, where did that money come from? Did that come out of Brian's budget or?
I don't know. More than likely, I told Brian, anything they do's gotta come out of their budget, but I don't know if it would have been an office supplies or how big of an expense was it first, do you remember?
Could have been off supplies, there was like.
Or who did we pay, I guess maybe that pays you too.
Headstones.
Several hundred dollars.
So that's something we haven't talked about before, they don't really have a line in their budget, this budget for that.
This EMS office supplies here, that's over.
Poorly dealt from Melody Beck here, so if he didn't order through her.
No.
Hmm, okay.
Depending on if you, I mean, even if you put it on his card, you should be able to tell what it, is it parts or was it, somebody coming to fix it?
I think Brian did.
Look at that office supplies.
Had a, had an upgrade, his hard drive or something to.
What are we talking about?
Uh, just some computer stuff, I just. Kevin had his computer upgraded, it was working real slow or something, so they spent like four, five hundred bucks on some stuff, but they're part about it. I was just wondering where the expense came out of. Came out of EMS or it came out of Brian's.
Uh, something else that was new this year, so EMS week, they did a lot of items, so we rented a popcorn machine, we bought cookies, we paid for balloons, we. So you're seeing some of that in here along with, I'm trying to remember, try printing. There's another line item. You're there, two down.
Did you get one? My gosh.
Oh, yeah.
Mine's hidden.
Is it? Not gonna share.
I don't know what you're talking about. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't break into it, yeah, they look good.
I searched the store and one day he had it. Took my points out.
Yeah, mine's still sitting there. What are we on right now?
We were talking about computer equipment, whether or not it came out of office supplies. I wanna say it was in meetings.
Sam, what?
Meetings or training, look at that actual activity. Yeah. All right, true.
Gonna talk to Jill.
Who?
I'm gonna talk to Jill.
Who was it?
Just reading.
Have you seen any accounts payable crisis numbers?
Yeah. I'm gonna correct the expense, but it just dug my mind, cause I was like, what the heck is that? It's kind of a terabyte.
Are they still?
One of those computer language things that I don't really know anything about.
Brian keeps telling me my computers, this is a. Gotta have beer place sooner or later, too.
Yeah, they start talking their computer lingo, a terabyte, and I was like, which dinosaur was that?
So look at the AP. You gotta go into AP.
Guess kilobyte wasn't big enough, megabyte wasn't big enough, now they got the tyrannosaurus rex byte.
Here at the beginning though.
How can you taper down more quickly?
What do you like for it?
I was just looking for a check, cause I didn't know where else. If I don't know where my calendar is, then.
There's the end of it.
Yeah, but I don't know what check round it was, I'm just trying to go by check date.
Yeah, I just assumed it was recent.
Why don't you find it, let us know tomorrow, let's keep working on it.
Okay, sorry.
Now I'm getting like Jeff, see.
It's four or five hundred bucks, I think.
We don't need two of us, Sam.
I know.
All right, I'll get the.
Come on, son, I'm agreeing.
No, I'd kinda like being able to be the grumpy one, you just keep being your nice person.
So did we feel like we were finished with six sixty?
Finished with six sixty?
Cause we cut out about three hundred thousand?
So are you keeping the transfer at a million and spending down reserves, or are you transferring more than that?
Where's our total expense for this year, not counting contingency?
Four nine oh six one eighty.
Well, that's our expense, plus a three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar deficit, right? So you can't really call it.
Well, that is the total expense though, you have to plug the revenue to balance it out. So either, you either have to put it into.
You've gotta.
More transfer in.
Transfer that in.
Or you have to reduce their contingency by that amount from the cash forward.
Okay, I know what you're saying, we either gotta transfer in one point three seven seven million.
Right.
Or we're gonna spend three hundred and seventy-seven thousand in our cash balance down.
Right.
Yes.
So. Or you can cut three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars out of their budget.
But we're assuming that the fees will go up, so to offset that.
Yes.
Assuming. Or they could, or they could go down.
Big assumption. It's a big assumption.
We're also assuming that we're gonna get three point five eight dollars in fees. No?
Oh, in fees, yeah. I don't think we're.
I know, I think three five is probably right on target if nothing changed, but we did increase our fee schedule, so you should see some increase. How much of an increase, that's not determined at this point, so I wouldn't suggest increasing the fee amount at the moment.
And I think Christian's comfortable and I'm comfortable with this for this year, if it does come to next year and those things don't fall through, it is time to talk about cutting. And the only big place to cut is.
Yeah. I'm good with.
I'm good with the million dollar transfer and spending down some of the cash.
Me too.
I was.
Okay with that?
Yeah, I guess I'm still confused why we're having to dip into, was it just this year that was the extra expenditures?
I think it's just this year we wanna spend down a little bit of that reserve.
And we kind of had a plan to spend down in, in seventeen, see the contingency was the budgeted at five hundred thousand.
I didn't really plan to, it just happened. I approved some of them, but the ones that I was approving were all revenue generating supposedly, so, okay. All right.
We're balanced.
Okay.
Now where do you wanna go, law enforcement, do you wanna go back and hit something in general that we didn't talk about before?
So.
Oh, something else in there, salaries, let's look at their, before we leave EMS, so, um, their salary schedule. Let's look at the spreadsheet, so we had the two and the three dollar bumps, and then we had the night shift bump. And I know it was brought up, brought up multiple times between Jerry and you guys that you wanted to cap their salaries. So, um, in their budget estimate, I have capped salaries, so they're, the ones in the dark orange there.
This is on your drive under commission budget, under two thousand and eighteen.
So I did twenty percent to the midpoint of their salary range and then another twenty percent to the maximum, so there's a forty percent spread from their starting salary to the point when they would max out. The ones in the dark orange are currently beyond the max, so they did not get the cola amount. If you don't wanna do that, we need to update this spreadsheet, theirs is the only department that we did that in, so it.
All, all those in orange are capped?
The dark orange, so.
Those down there are EMTs.
Right, so where this cola amount is zero, this is where they're at with their bumps, most of them got some sort of other bump, but.
I think I counted nine.
So almost every one of those got a two or three dollar an hour bump? Except for maybe one there.
Yeah. And it's really a philosophy thing on your guys' part, whether or not they get cost of living or not, you're capping that salary or not. And there at the moment, there's a cap on the salary. And it's from the current starting salaries is the forty percent, it did not take into consideration any move or anything at current salary. It took into consideration the two dollar night, it took into consideration the lieutenant sergeant, whatever.
So just a couple of things I'll throw out there, I mean, I think our starting wage is above what the average wage for our region probably is. I think that's a good thing, but so, that's not necessarily the, the beginning point of where the range should be. So I think you could argue that both ways, but I think we're higher than most area EMS services.
Other than Columbia?
Other than Columbia, well, but, so, I'm just saying that our range should be based on what the market is for an EMT and a paramedic for this area. It really shouldn't, your range shouldn't really be set by what your starting wage is, and, I mean, we have a big disparity at EMS on what one person does and the job that they do, we require them to do the same job, but the pay is very different. And so, just think about that, I mean, obviously our paramedics start at seventeen twenty-eight. But I'm just not, I'm not convinced that the starting wage for that position for this area isn't probably closer to fifteen dollars or fourteen dollars or whatever. And then I would be okay with a forty percent range, but our wage is higher than every other ambulance service around except for Columbia.
And our disparity, it's happened for a couple of reasons, one is we inherited, these people from capital region with probably some of twenty-plus years of experience. And I mean, also the other disparity is, we did it when we moved them from a twenty-four to a twelve, and then two and the three dollar bumps. Makes that look odd when you're looking at one person over another, so, yes, there is disparity, but, person by person, you could probably explain where that is. But yes, you're probably right, the beginning wage, we have to have a beginning wage though, I mean, I understand there's a range, but I think we have to have a beginning or otherwise that compression disparity between them gets worse if we don't have one, you know. I know, right now it seems higher than any of the other ones around us, I agree with that.
Right, but, I mean, what I'm saying is, so, if you set your range for EMS at market, at market range, and you give a forty percent swing, it's, it's a whole lot different than every other job description in the county, because we, we realize we're behind probably twenty percent. So, I, I'm not saying that we're gonna reduce our wages, I'm just saying that the range needs to be more in line with the rest of the county.
Right, well, I think their range has moved because we inherited them and they, we've kept up with the market. The range that we have for most of the other departments has not kept up with the market, when we did that study, that was the market. To me, if we wanted to keep up with that market, we should have kept the cola going on that grid, we didn't, we inherited EMS, we had consultants come in and everybody said this is what the range should be, so they are up to market.
Right.
It just looks odd because the rest of us in the county are not up to market.
Well, but, but some.
But would you ever bring anyone in and pay them less than our starting salary, I mean, I think our range needs to be based on what we pay.
Right.
If you want to condense that range a little and make it a thirty percent spread, that's fine, but I think our starting pay is the bottom of our range.
And to be quite honest, even our range, it goes from medium, midpoint to, no, I'm sorry. Minimum to midpoint to maximum, in there, we had many steps, and all those steps were based on years of service, where people should be, and that got you to the midpoint. And I think by midpoint, you were here ten to twelve years to get to there, I agree, and then, you know, the difference in the twenty percent from each step, is that acceptable in all facets of jobs that we have here, probably not, but that's how it was designed, all of them were the same increment percentage across.
And like I said, theirs, only because we have been talking about it and made so many changes, theirs is the only department that we even looked at this option. No other department have we.
Because.
Because we don't have. Because we don't have a good schedule, we don't have a good starting, we don't...
We don't, those regions are up to market.
Well, we made so many changes, because we changed the ranking structure, and then we were doing two dollars and three dollars. And I know, you know, we're going to come up with, you know, the sheriff is saying he's got carpers making the same or more than a sergeant, so, where, this is...
There's issues all over, but if you wanted to start a cap, this is a perfect one, to be able to start it, because I think their scale is at market.
I mean, if you really study the personnel there, and granted, some, I'm trying to stay general here, but some people may be a slightly better employee than another, but when you look at some of the people that came over from CAP region versus other people that came over from CAP region and have been here for a long periods of time, there's great disparity in their wages as well. So, I mean, it's, it's not just because they're a twenty-year person or whatever, because we have, you can take eighteen or twenty-year people and their wages are so different, and it's like, how did that happen?
And why was that three and two? I mean, I mean, you go put three on somebody's salary, that will look odd.
Right, and that may, that happened in a few instances, but there's other instances where that didn't happen, and there's still dollars per hour in disparity. And so, you know, I don't know if there was favoritism play at some point in time, and some people got raises and other people didn't, how that all occurred, but, I mean, it's just...
And I mean, this is not something we have to do this year, it's just something that was brought up more than once, so I put it in there this way. If it's not something you're ready to tackle yet, we don't have to do it, it's just an option. But we need to decide that before we approve the budget.
I mean, I think there needs to be a cap. I mean, I just, granted, once you cap it, that, that range has to move with the COLA. So, so here again, here's another scenario. So, the range moves with the COLA, now what if we give a merit increase? Does it still move with the COLA or the cost of living or the index, the CPI index?
Am I, it should be the CPI index for this area.
Right.
It's always done by the COLA we've given, because our COLA has not been that great.
Okay.
You know, it's been one percent or something, so...
Right, so that's the scenario. So say we give a two percent merit pool or whatever, the range moves by the CPI index, which it should, but somebody doesn't get it. Somebody doesn't get any merits, okay? So now they're, they could be below the range.
I never knew, if you say COLA, people have to get the COLA.
I'm not talking about the COLA.
Okay, then we should, oh, I see, you're putting it on the CPI.
So that's the difference here, though, is that one percent we have in there right now is in there as a COLA.
I get that.
And it's a decision as to whether or not, if the range moves by one percent, do they move one percent if they're not outside of the range?
Well, so...
Some of these will probably still be outside of the range even with the one percent.
Right. Well, normally if you gave a COLA, I would think that the range would move by either the COLA given or the CPI index, if the COLA was not given. Now, if it was an all merit base, it throws everything out of proportion, because now you have a system that's based on market. Are you going to keep it at market, or are you going to just, I mean, or you got an Archer study that, whatever.
Right, and it's all on how you, it's all on how you do though, whether that study's going to continue to work or not for you. And unfortunately, that study worked for us when we started, but we didn't keep up with it.
Right.
So I think everybody, it took us two or three years to get people on it to begin with. And then we didn't keep moving until the last three years or so, so, yeah.
I'm just throwing out scenarios.
And it's hard, and it's hard to enter into a study too. If you know you're, to me, you have to have the capital behind that to enforce that, to be able to implement that and to continue sustaining that in study. But we don't know. We don't know what will happen, and we don't know what the outcome will be. I mean, I'm anticipating everybody would get raised out of it, those people, because we haven't increased our rate.
And this may be something we want to consider next year, but I just know it's been brought up more than once, so here's what it looks like at the moment.
Why do you think they stay with the one percent? They're up to market. We can do a stop on this, because you can see how this eighteen, you added a three, which some of these are, that eighteen now looks way different from that twenty-five. And that's because of, a lot of that's because of the three.
Well, some people could have gotten a three and a two.
Yes.
I don't think, I don't think too many of them did, but, or any did, the night differential.
Well, you, and you could have gotten the three prior and then got the two this time, so that's not showing on here too, so...
That makes a big difference in that final, compared to somebody else that you did give any of them, yes, I agree.
So...
But we created that, so...
I mean, when we talked about the three and the two, going away from the twenty-fours, I was okay with it as long as we capped the wage. But, I mean, if you guys, if you guys don't want to cap the wage, I mean, that's, that's totally up to you, but I just think that any time I've ever been in any workplace, if two people are doing the exact same job and there's big disparities in pay, it creates an environment that is not good. I mean, you know, it's not like, it's not like I get hurt and I call up and say, send so-and-so and not so-and-so. You know, you get who you get, and you're, you know, they're all doing a good job, and so, and I mean, obviously there's some that are more veteran than others, and they should make more because they've been here longer, but it's just, it's, there's too big a disparity.
So you're saying not to give them the COLA?
I'm saying that we just have to have a range, and they're out of the range, and then the range moves based on either a COLA given or a CPI index or whatever.
But they still get the raise, the COLA?
Only if they're in, within the range. So like if, if it's seventeen twenty-eight and the minimum moves up, whatever forty percent is up here, if they're still above it, they wouldn't get it. If they fall below it, then yes, they would.
I don't like that. If I was, if I was there, I came over from CAP region or whatever, and whatever raises I fell into because of going from forty-eight to twenty-four, taking a night differentials, and then I, I would feel like I would still deserve the COLA as well.
And you're comfortable with the disparity between...
Oh yeah, well, they, they got a, they got a COLA and they got a whole lot more because they got three dollars an hour.
They also went from the forty-eight to twenty-four for that, right?
They went from a twenty-four to a twelve.
Twenty-four to twelve, no, forty-eight to twenty-four. That's a tough, yeah, twenty-four to a twelve, so... But when they retire, then the person takes her place, is going to come in at the starting, and then that's going to kind of fix it, quote unquote.
Yeah.
Right now, we've got some different ones in there because we've made some changes, so it does look weird, but that's by no fault of the employee.
No.
I get what you're saying about the, they're doing the same job, but there's...
Right, it's by no fault of the employee, it's, it was by, it was by favoritism at CAP region or, or at, at Cole County EMS, or at some point, somebody got a big raise versus somebody didn't.
Yeah, I'd rather get rid of the percentage raise than do a dollar amount. I've never been a fan of the percentage raise, never.
Because Jeff, you leave it like where it's at and not cap that at some point, you've got somebody here in two thousand and nine making that, and you've got somebody here in two thousand and ten making that. That's what Chris is talking about, the difference, and it just, they're doing the same jobs. I mean, okay, this one may have a, I forget, fifty cent difference in pay from...
Okay, tell me, tell me where that disparity, disparity, whatever you want to call, where did it happen?
I don't know.
Did it happen before us? Did we make it happen?
Obviously.
No.
Here's, here's a, here's a person that came over right here.
Yeah, and you know what, they were here whenever CAP region had it, right?
Right, well, that, yeah, they came over from CAP region.
There's a difference there.
So here, and here, and then, you know, some of these people up here that came over. And if you look at the, if you really dive into it and look at it, you can actually go back and see when they were actually hired at CAP region, because we have that information, and their total number of years of service will be almost identical. And I'm not, I'm not saying exactly maybe these, these two individuals, but if you look at it, I mean, you'll see that maybe both of them are eighteen to twenty years of service, and there's a pay difference of four or five dollars an hour.
We've got all kinds of people going across the county that make...
Oh, there are two, oh, four or five dollars an hour difference?
That do the same job, that do the same job, but if they're a total dick, I'm not going to give them the merit raise. You know, who's going to get it? The person comes out with a smile on their face every day.
We haven't had that much merit play.
I just don't know how you change this.
I'm not talking about the, that total, but I'm talking about there's going to be disparity in, between the same employee that does the same job.
Oh, I agree, there's going to be some disparity, but I just...
I can have somebody who's going to come in and do the same job every day too, I might have different things each day, but, you know, if somebody's going to be painting, they can also do other stuff. Whereas the other one, probably barely trust them with a paintbrush, but they can do the job, are they going to get paid the same? No. Sometimes you got to remind them to breathe.
Well, I guess this one's harder to look at because you look at the hourly versus the salary. So if you take someone making twenty-one, forty-one an hour, they're making thirty-nine thousand dollars a year. They're making twenty-six dollars an hour, and they're making fifty-four thousand dollars a year. That's a big difference. There's not that, yeah, there's not that kind of differences in, in other employees.
You don't think?
I don't think, forty, fifty thousand dollars...
Look at, look at what office assistants across the county. This is, this is due to the CAP region salaries, it's nothing new to us.
Um, some of this is a...
Part, part of CAP region, because, okay, they had twenty-four hour shifts, we no longer do, we fixed that, we changed it.
I do real well with my man Justin. You know that, or you banana. You guys bring food in, it's...
Well, like I said, it's, it's not something you have to do, it was just to throw it out there and show you what it looked like.
I'm, I'm against it. If we do a COLA, everybody gets it.
Yeah, I agree with Jeff.
Jeff, one, two, three, there's, you know, there's a handful of them, and eventually they're going to, okay, two handfuls. Can't ever be right with you.
Could have given a flat dollar raise, because then...
I would love that.
And then people that make more get less.
No, they're not getting less, they're getting the same, and the people that make more, that...
They're getting less percentage.
That hundred dollars to them means, means probably more to the people that make less than them.
Well, and you're talking about multiple departments having problems with compression. A flat dollar raise makes that compression even worse.
I don't even care about compression, that word doesn't even bother me. Because you're talking about these people having problems with their raises, and then you're going to do a percent, that's going to make it even worse, because that gives the ones that are making more already that you have a problem with, a bigger raise. Makes them get even more than the other ones that you were talking about. So when you're trying to help the compression deal, you're actually making it worse for the ones that you want to be compressed, for lack of a better word. You're wanting them to be closer in salary so they do do the same job. Before two thousand and nine, I don't know what they did, so...
Okay, we'll decide that at EMS.
So that's good.
So if we give a COLA, everybody gets it?
Yep, so...
I'd, I'd prefer it.
That's going to change the numbers.
What you guys decide, oh yeah, so, well, it changes unless we do a flat dollar raise, and it may not change it that much.
Flat hour will be more typically intended, I'm just trying to figure out.
You got a number in mind that you were thinking of?
What was one percent? What was our, if we do the raise across the county, what's one percent?
One percent of what?
What was in the budget for that would have, the one percent would have mounted to, all across. Was it six fifty, five fifty?
Hundred and fifty?
Sixty-two in general. I didn't have one.
That don't help me, I need to know everybody.
Sixty-two, eighty-two, eighty-seven.
Because we don't ever just give a raise to general, we don't ever just give a raise to law enforcement, we don't ever just give a raise to public court, so when I'm asking, I'm asking for countywide. Then how many employees do we have? That would be eligible for it? Around three hundred.
About one fifty.
So it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one percent, I think that's what we were talking about before.
One fifty-two, four ninety-nine, thirty-seven.
So, a hundred and fifty thousand divided by three hundred, so five hundred dollars? Thank you, I'll keep talking to you. Don't be that way, Sam.
Sorry.
Okay, four fifty, five hundred, we did four fifty one time, so that's probably where we came up with that number. There goes Sam Eugene Water, get rid of that, we could...
I want to get, I have it for Christmas.
Why don't you put it up for sale at your store, put it in your window?
I have it here for Christmas.
That's, that's a good idea. Can we give that to, that's what we should do, give it to the city. Jeff City could take it over. They could annex Eugene. That one, get us a friend to that.
Got another school?
Uh, I know, we're over three hundred, especially as...
So that goes in as a COLA if we decided to do a flat amount, right? That would go in as a COLA.
It's up to you.
Debbie's always taken it as a COLA in the past.
I have the flat amount, then I can break it down to a percent to get to...
I mean, it's probably not. But if you don't want to give the elected officials anything, then you have to do it as a merit.
And I'm, I'm all for that too.
I know Columbia went, what was it, they gave their employees like a thousand dollars because they said they hadn't given raises in so many years. And then, I forget the troubles they ran into in doing that, because you, I don't know, they were part of a one-time bonus, and they said you can't, can't do that.
Yeah, I don't think you can.
Surely three twenties is close. It's closer to four hundred dollars if you just take salaries, that one fifty-two number included benefits.
And the other way you could do it is make it a merit pool, and then let each department decide how they're going to do it. And that would be one way we could address, the ambulance one is saying this is merit, it's not a COLA. And the ones that are outside of that range that you were talking about, we can say, hey, you're already up here.
I don't think it's enough money to address any problems.
Every little bit helps, so, then don't do it at all. Is that what you're saying?
I don't think, I don't think calling it a merit is going to address any problems. I would still call it a COLA for a small amount as we're talking.
What's the difference? Actually, it'd be more money because we'd be able to, we'd have less, so we'd have to give the... Actually, it'd be more money because we'd be able to, we'd have less, so we'd have to give the elected officials. So you'd have a little more to see what, now they're four thousand dollars that you can scatter around the county.
Now where? Now where?
Where do you want to go?
We just decided what we're doing, and we're just gonna skip over and jump around.
Do you want to do salaries now, or do you want to wait until you're done with everything else?
Well, how do we get to salaries?
Well, it was just to tell you that EMS had that in there, and you guys could decide whether you want to cap salaries or not while we were talking about EMS.
All right, so what's next?
Where do you want to go?
We got forty-five minutes. What can we do in forty-five minutes?
Be done.
Is there anything in general you want to go back and talk about?
Where, where are we at with possibly moving some of that pre-trial release money and. Nine-one-one.
Well.
Money and. I mean, I, I'm, I'm really concerned with the general fund possibly struggling in years to come. I mean, obviously, we're not really. Affected too much by sales tax, even though we get certain percent of that to offset the tax rate. Property tax, but anyway, I just don't know that our revenues are gonna continue to go up. If that's the case, we're gonna struggle with raises in future years. I mean, I don't know where you see that, but the use tax going down, and I mean, the only thing we really have to, to offset that is to raise our fees, which would be an increase in the levy.
I think we need to take a look at some fees across the county. If there are some that we can adjust, I think we need to look at that. In the health department or anywhere where we have control over the fee, we need to take a look at whether or not those fees need to be adjusted. Because I know that it's been a while on some of them. Some fees are set by statute that we don't have any control over. But yeah, our, our control over revenue in the general fund is not locked other than the tax levy.
I mean. Some funds seem to do, I wouldn't say well, but are financially more stable than others. And as long as the general fund continues to suffer, county employees are gonna continue to suffer because we have to treat everybody the same. And so, you know, we're gonna be, be right back here next year. Trying to figure out how we're gonna give raises, and the general fund is in the toilet. It's just. So, just food for thought.
I know we've moved the reverse nine-one-one to EMS. Are there other, any other expenses with Bill Fopper that could possibly?
To EMS? It's not to EMS.
To.
Emergency services, right?
Emergency services, sales tax.
Is there any other expenses in his department maybe that could be moved over?
I did talk to Bill about that one. He says that doesn't.
Yeah, I, I talked to him too.
So it's just a kind of a waste of our time to put it in and kick it out. So if you guys agree, I'll take that back now.
It really isn't any benefits.
Do we need to look at? It just really gets the door.
Not in G R, but it helps.
I mean, it doesn't help the emergency services sales tax if we were to make that fund pay for the entire nine-one-one system, but it, it does. It does allow us the ability to charge for the pre-trial release program or create some kind of a admin fee for that to the law enforcement fund who's gaining one point three million dollars in federal prisoner revenue. Or we take some of that federal prisoner revenue coming in, and we pay for the pre-trial release program.
What about the rent for the South Ridge building coming out of EMS sales tax?
Emergency services sales tax.
So it pays the rent for bill side?
Entire building. I mean, and that, and that's an option too. It doesn't make that sales tax. I mean, spends more of that money. It, it doesn't. I mean, it helps, helps general fund.
Have you talked to the sheriff about pre-trial release?
Yeah.
He has said if he takes it over, it's gonna be run differently.
I know that he is.
I'm not talking about him taking it over.
Just reducing it from the two point four million?
Yeah. I don't, I want the courts to run it. I want it to be under the courts. I think that's the better system. And I'm not, I'm not saying that we charge him a hundred and forty thousand, but we take a hundred and forty thousand out of the federal prisoner reimbursement. There's, there's, I mean, there's a huge correlation between those two programs. I mean, we're reducing the amount of people in our jail, which reduces our costs. Thus allowing us to backfill with federal prisoners who were actually making money on and actually getting paid versus state prisoners that we may or may not get anything out of.
And there's a big correlation to that program why we're at one point eight deficit. Yes, we've had reduction in some fees, but that is about the only expense we've added to GR. We haven't added any new employees that I can think of. In GR.
This year.
So where would that one point eight come from?
You mean one hundred eighty-three?
Yeah, one hundred eighty-three, so.
The big changes have been pre-trial release costs, and we've spent more on parks than we have in the past. Those are the two large changes to general fund.
Yes, insurance has gone up a little bit, but not, you know. So, that's what happened, you know. Of course, we are spending some of that reserved down this year too because of the health department building.
Did we add a person in the unit starting here? Well, it's not full, but.
No, it's not full. We, yeah, we.
Part maybe four or maybe five.
I don't know. It's the only other one I can think of that we've added recently.
Yeah, and she would be in that box.
Yeah, we haven't filled it.
I mean, the whole reason that the law enforcement fund is doing well and the outlook has turned around has been federal prisoners. I mean, and we were, we were watching it. It was a deficit, and basically when Jim LaPage was still here, he was like, if the federal prisoner money does come in, it will help offset those costs, and we've finally gotten there, and we're seeing it really has turned around. I mean, we went from like four hundred thousand one year to almost eight hundred thousand the next, and then this, this year, we're probably looking at one point two, one point three million dollars.
Just be aware that if it ever goes away, we're.
Sure.
We're gonna be in trouble.
Well, we're, we're back to where we have to cut personnel to operate the jail because we can't afford to do it.
I was talking to somebody at MAC, and they were talking about some of these small counties about doing some regional jails just because.
I mean, that, moving that fifty thousand into sales and bringing it back in, into general will help down to, you know, one hundred and thirty thousand dollar difference. Hundred and thirty thousand dollar difference in a budget of almost thirteen million. Again, I don't think that's a big, um, big deficit to have. I know it didn't, doesn't sound good. We still have a deficit. Keep in mind that one percent is in there, but I don't think that's, we transferred that much in the last couple months of the year. So, if we can hold everybody, I know it sounds easy.
You're talking about taking the rent from, from emergency management, putting it into the emergency services sales tax. And then that, thus that reduces our deficit by fifty thousand. But it adds fifty thousand to emergency services.
And we talked, and we talked about the utilities out there also, something else to look at.
For the entire building. I mean, we, we tried it. It's a, it's a pain now. We tried to keep most of that in bi-squared footage on that side and meters.
Who's paying the back?
That's on a separate meter. I don't know. I thought it was EMS.
No, I don't think it is.
To me, to me, all that emergency management and all that equipment and hazmat and the, and the, oh, the MEOC and, and all those, I mean. None of those things will ever generate a dollar. I mean, all they do is cost us money for maintenance forever. Yeah. I mean, those are definitely, uh, one of those funds that, you know, you're just gonna spend money on them for forever. And so it's nice that we have that, that great building out at South Ridge, but. Seeing those in emergency services. Makes it a little bit easier to give more to emergency services just because you have those assets within your organization.
I don't know. Probably taking it out of the emergency services.
The rent?
And the utilities.
But I mean, it's, so you understand where I'm going though is, I mean, your, your contribution, well, I mean, it's just money spent out of the emergency services sales tax code. So that's, that mu, that's not gonna grow unless your sales tax really takes off.
Yeah, I'd still like to look at that back part too about moving the voting machines and whatever Ralph's got over there. I think, I, that just.
Those are definitely.
Those, that just, that just, that just, well, I knew, I knew about the voting machines, but I didn't know about, but that's, if we've got space, why the hell?
Especially in the front.
Why are we paying rent? And if, again, if there's temperature, climate control and all that, you know, we need to, we need to find that out, but, you know, when Marvin had that, I talked to him and I said, this is.
We got two offices in the front that are temperature controlled and climate controlled that they could.
Yeah.
Store their stuff in and pull it out into that big conference room and.
I think that needs to happen.
I just know that those are two expenses that if we could get them to go away, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I think those, well, they need to go away.
I agree.
If we have the space to do it, it would be.
Ready to cut it out of the budget?
Well. Yeah, we just have to, we have to make sure.
You need to figure a plan for that before you just put it out.
You know, what, what the, you know, if it's.
Put somebody in charge of that, like Bill, like what are the records needs, what are the corpse needs, and then, then we make a plan for that.
Yeah, yeah.
And turn that over, and then let that person come back to work and plan, and make all those arrangements with those elected officials.
And something else is right now that one room out in there has all the health department's furniture until they move that. That space is being used, so maybe that's one of the things we try to determine during eighteen is can we make this happen? Once the health department moves, can we move things around and make space for those items?
Yeah.
I mean, there's probably three offices out there that should be empty. Bill should be the only office in that. Jennifer's gone, Mike's gone.
There was just two there.
Oh, was there just two down there?
One's in like utility closet, so Bill office, utility closet, and then it's Mike's whole office.
Well, I, I, I want to look at that. I just, I can't see paying rent for.
One of you guys delete that chart, whatever you want. It's gonna have coordination.
I think we put Sam in charge of that.
There you go, Sam. Second.
Then we, yeah, we probably do need to wait until the health department moves, then we get that out of there. But I, I want to find, I want to find out what, what they require, you know, for the voting machines. And if it works over there, then as soon as we move the health department stuff out of there, we. Wonder what kind of lease he's got.
Who? Clark?
Clark, of course, my, yeah.
I think.
Six hundred and fifty a month.
But I know I was gonna put, is there a lease?
I think it's just a quarterly agreement, I don't think it's.
And where's Ralph's?
His is with, yeah.
U-Haul, yes, U-Haul or something.
Okay.
And I don't know how much stuff it is.
Okay.
Maybe, you know, Bill's kinda good at that.
Yeah.
There's about ten grand a year you saved right there.
Yeah.
I, I think that.
Get rid of the Wall Street Journal. There's another five hundred bucks.
I'll give you mine. I'll give you mine when I'm done.
One subscription.
I don't care. If there's other things you guys want to go back through and talk about.
Well, that's just, that's just, but it's.
Knowing those cuts may happen and taking fifty, putting it back into here, um, still a hundred thousand dollar difference over. Are you guys comfortable with that?
We still got a hundred thousand deficit? All right, we're gonna make some cuts.
Well, do that fifty thousand, fifty-four out of. Well, no, you're just gonna take the expense out. No, Bill's.
Where? Are you talking about where the old ambulance used to be for storage? Isn't that full?
It's got some ambulances and it's got some other stuff in it.
I know, I saw, I was thinking it was full, so, but the offices up front, those are open. That training room there, why can't we put that over in the ambulance area?
The training room?
Yeah, we get rid of some recliners and stuff.
I just, I need to go see how much space they've got for the.
I think Bill uses that training room, and I don't think it'd be big enough over that, uh, on the other side there, but I don't know.
Oh, yeah, and if we're trying to do training, you got people walking in and out of the kitchen and stuff, so, yeah, okay. But how much of them other big cooler rooms are full?
Um, you mean where the morgue would be, emergency morgue?
Well, that side and the great big rooms where we had stuff, files and stuff.
So in, in one of the big, uh, well, we, we took the, one of the big cooler rooms and bumped out EMS into it. So that one's.
So we got like one and a half left? Or did we use that whole side up for it when we bumped it? Haven't been out there in a while. Need to go look back again in the storage area.
That's its only restriction.
We need to look and see how much space.
I mean, Bill, Bill has some emergency stuff stored in one of them, cots in different piles, yeah.
All stacked up and, I mean, he's utilizing that.
Yeah, and then in the other one, a lot of those boxes and stuff went away, and now most of that's, I think, Don L. And those racks that have all the files in them, so I think there's a lot.
So all that's still there?
Yeah.
I thought we got a lot of that scanned.
That's what she wants.
No, that was the stuff up in the attic.
Total utilities, but do we want to?
Because our laws are still antiquated. Cause our laws are still antiquated and you have to have...
Do we just need to split that up different?
Paper files.
Some of those stuff that Ralph has down there goes back to 1820. It's, which is kinda neat.
Ameren, Pro Energy, just those, just electric. I mean, if we're gonna put other stuff over in Shepherd's, we may not wanna take the utilities out of sales tax, but... Well, I mean, I guess it depends on what we're using the building for, so if we're gonna put other stuff over there, you know what I mean? Right, right.
But that's...
What else you wanna look at? 129 is after we take that rent out.
Yeah, I mean, to me, you get the 140 that we're using for pre-trial release and we're good. We're good by $10,000.
I'm still on the fence with that one for where that comes from. I really think we need to increase the fees on what we're charging them too because it's...
Increase the fees on what we're charging them?
Yeah.
Who?
The pre-trial release stuff.
The people that are on?
Mm-hmm.
Well, see, you got some of them who don't pay anything, cause, so...
I think it should, it should pay for itself.
It's not even close to that. This is the first year we've actually seen revenue. We're only budgeting $4,000.
I understand that, but you got a choice to either sit in jail
Richard sent that over to us.
or you wanna be free to be able to work and, you know, live your life until you have your court date.
So are you saying that they should pay in advance?
I'm not saying it's gonna make it all up.
Well, if they have court date and they're found innocent, they don't pay.
You know, if they, if they pay to be on pre-trial release and out of jail, I mean, that's kinda like an alternative, just paying a bond.
Yeah.
I mean, you're not gonna get your bond back if you, uh, if you got found, uh, or they dismissed the charges.
I don't know. We need, probably need to talk to Richard.
Or take half of it out of there?
No.
No? All or none?
Well, I mean, I just, I wanna solve, be on the same page with that, but I mean...
I was gonna say, I think that the sheriff needs to weigh in a little.
Yeah, he's saying that we take that...
He already weighed in.
I was gonna say, I don't, I don't think that he is in agreement with that.
No, I think it's...
It just got really cold in here all of a sudden. Is he around? Is he listening to us?
Sure he is.
Sure he is. He's doing circles in his chair.
I mean, you, you can scan a cat a number of different ways, but I mean, I don't know how you can, how can he possibly say that that $1.3 million isn't related to the pre-trial release program? And so, let's do away with it and let's stick all of our prisoners back in jail that have been overcharged with crimes that may or may not get found guilty. And so now, now not only do we lose $1.3 million, now we still got all the same costs because now we got all these employees. And, and we're just like every other county around here and we're taking it in the shorts. We lose $1.3 million in revenue and, and then how's he gonna ever give his people any raises? Not only that, but he's gotta cut his staff to offset that cost. He's gotta cut $1.3 million out of salaries. Right?
Hmm, I don't know. If, if we're gonna do a pre-trial release program, pay for it, then, and we need spaces for them in the jail. If we get overcrowded, then we just pay a little bit, ship them, have them housed somewhere else because we're gonna make more money holding a federal prisoner than what we'd be paying to hold one of the state prisoners.
Yeah, so you house them for 45, you're gonna make 75, but, uh...
But of that 45, um, 35, it's, it's a fixed cost.
Well, but he's saying you could still have your federal prisoners, but you're gonna ship our prisoners to some other jail. Well, that's if they can take them and, uh...
Just playing devil's advocate with that.
I know, but that's very political too as far as, you know, you had a bond issue, you build this jail to keep our prisoners here first, you know?
Did it say our prisoners? I thought it was just a jail. Didn't say anything about because we want you to be housed in Co County. It's cause we needed a jail, eager to jail and more efficient jail.
Well, they're in jail. I don't care whether they're in our jail or they're in, they're in jail. That's...
Well, especially the bad ones.
They said Columbia is...
So you don't see the advantage in paying $45 to Camden to house one of our prisoners and then we make 75?
No, I think, well, now that we bought this, that we got this new jail, no. I mean, I see why Bloom County's doing it. It's cheaper to house their prisoners somewhere else than to have, make a new jail to go to the people to ask for a bond, yeah. But we should charge the real cost too and we're not, you know...
Charge who?
Whoever. I mean...
The state?
The state is a flat amount.
Just send them that, send them a letter, Debbie. I mean, how that goes.
No, I'm...
Tell them we wanna raise from $19 and some change to like $35.
Well, but that whole, that whole thing's a joke too. You only get the $19 or $22 if they're convicted and they serve one day at DOC.
Yeah.
But if they're, if they're convicted for time served, we get nothing.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Where's the statute that says we have to house their prisoners?
I'm all for, turn them all loose.
Well, they, they're proud of...
We get you to help clean our parks or, this parks was, you know, when we went down through Mississippi, you saw, actually saw chain gangs out picking up trash on the interstate.
Yeah, um, we can't turn them all loose, but I mean, the violent ones, obviously we have to hold and we still gotta get them convicted too.
Let's look at recorders actual. And then...
I just... I'm not trying to take the easy way out by any means, but I don't know where we're gonna find $130,000 in general fund to offset our deficit.
So, so we did have a deficit in last year's budget, about the same amount, but we're projecting to be about 318 to the good. So, I don't think it's a bad thing to leave the 130 in there, see where we end up. We always have the option next year to do something different with pre-trial release, if that's something we wanna do.
Yeah, maybe we're just behind public minister and just maybe some of, you know, changing office holders. And we have how many more elections next year than we would...
Right, elections is a big one.
Election hurts us next year and we'll just hope that it repeats in 19.
Then you'll have another... You'll have a cat. Next year's a senate. US senate, race senate.
Yeah.
Big, big senate race next year.
Yeah, you'll have Hawley and McCaskill.
Which two's gonna have time, you know, top top that for...
Right.
So the following year, the election should be down.
Right, right.
And 20 will be another big one.
Right. I think we have a little bit of time to talk about these kinda things. I don't think that it's something that has to be decided before you do 18 budget.
If we get into July and if we're...
And like I said, if we can get some of those other rent things out of the budget and things like that, that'll help.
I sort of see, you know, the stock market's new records and everything. It's like, you know, I don't know what's, I don't know what's going on.
That doesn't help us. That doesn't affect us. I mean, it helps, uh, sales tax for...
It should.
Uh, law enforcement, ambulance, public works. Doesn't do anything for general revenue.
It's not really helping that either. I mean, with all the online sales, sales tax is not growing like the economy is.
It's not.
But it's not going any lower, so it's actually, I mean, it grew 2%, which 2% is not a whole lot, but at least it's growing.
Right.
So... But it's not, it doesn't matter what they do. It's not really gonna help general revenue. We can move money around like the pre-trial release money, uh, some of the emergency services money and get it out of general revenue.
And I think that anybody in general fund, if they have control over their fees, needs to look at their fee schedule and see if there's
I agree.
any adjustments that need to be made.
We probably need to do that just countywide. We probably need to do that every year at this time. Okay, bring up the Eugene water. You wanna talk about that right now then? Cause that needs to go up again too.
Yeah, it does.
Well, are you guys okay with the 130 and then we can forward to GR? Cause there's really not anywhere else to go here.
I mean, I just, I don't know. Now we budget the deficit. I just don't like it.
Yeah, I'm the same way. I don't like it.
You have the option to go through a nickel and dime. We can, we can...
We don't wanna fool ourselves either and end up with 200 some, at the end of the year.
I don't know. We can nickel and dime $130,000. Yeah, $400 Wall Street Journal's not gonna do it.
Well, we figured out 10,000 as soon as we get the storage units taken care of.
Yeah, I like that.
We need to go see if we got room to do that, how much room they need. I don't know how much they actually use.
That's what I, I'm, first thing I'll do is have them go show me what...
It's really a joint effort for everybody to kinda tighten their belts and try to keep their expenses down and, you know, if all, everyone in GR keeps their expenses down, then there may be more money next year to give more raises.
We make them do the same exercise we got public works doing right now. Go through your budget. If you want this raised, you're gonna have to make some cuts somewhere. You pick or we pick. So, and I think it's a lot easier if they pick where they're gonna
Yeah, because...
cut the skin off that.
I'm not sure what other fund you guys may wanna talk about as far as...
Do you wanna talk about Eugene water or you wanna wait and save that fee discussion for some other time?
I think we gotta have, uh, Cliff or Larry or one of them up here to...
Excuse me. When's the last time we raised that? Two years ago or has it been longer than that?
Have we raised them since we went to meters?
I'm not sure that we've ever raised it.
All right, we're taking in like 22,000 and we're, we're, we're in the red 26,000. It just, that's, that's...
Well, we used to not even be collecting a lot of them. Some of them were so far in their rears that we weren't getting any money cause we'd go shut it off and they, they put their pit bull chain to the meter so we couldn't get to it and they'd turn it back on. But now we got them fixed where they can, they can shut it off and... But they used to use a penny to do that. Take them, take off the top, put a penny in, screw it on there so they could turn it back on.
Well, I was gonna say, it hasn't changed since we went to meters.
It's been four years ago?
13.
Wow. Getting old, Debbie.
I didn't, I'm not sure that it really went up that much. I think we just established the rate.
Well, it was a, it was a flat fee before we put the meters in.
Okay, okay.
And then when we, when we actually went to meters, then they actually started paying based on usage.
Right.
And we haven't changed it since that initial usage.
God, that brings you back to the water usage out there at the firehouses.
Oh, yeah.
What are they filling up the fire trucks there?
We need to look, we need to look at that because that's, that's, there's a lot of things we need to look at.
I, I think that's one that needs to be talked about anyway. Like I said, they're supposed to be billing this quarterly. We're not seeing it.
I, I just think we need to go to a different, uh, different system and just pay them a flat amount.
Well, what happened, we were paying for somebody to come do some kind of study or something, you know? I didn't hear that, I pretended that that was the last thing we were paying somebody because somebody needed that in order to maybe take over the system, maybe I'm the reason.
Oh, you mean the Eugene water?
Yeah.
Okay, you're talking about something else.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We were talking about fire station.
Yeah.
Fire station ramp.
They jump around. It keeps Jeffos...
Yeah, so we, we had Bartlett and West look at combining the systems.
You're okay. You're okay, Jeff.
Redfield's on Missouri American and we were talking about trying to bore a line and combine the two systems and make it more marketable. And I think we got the study complete. We still didn't have anybody that was really chomping at the bit to take it over, so... But we had a grant or something for that. So we're back to square one.
Were we just gonna give it to, uh, Sarah?
Well, no, we never, we never even got, got, got that far. It was gonna cost X number of dollars to combine the two systems so that, and, uh, there was the gas station and possibly the school and, but...
Eric, I think the school was the one that kind of initiated it, wasn't it?
Just as a backup system for them, cause I think they have their own well.
So I think we've done most of the budgets other than law enforcement. I don't know if you guys wanna start it yet today or if you just wanna wait till tomorrow.
It's wait, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a while, I think.
Law enforcement?
So we got, there's something on the agenda tomorrow.
We're waiting on Road and Bridge to finish theirs. We've done capital improvement. We did EMS. We've done general code.
Yeah. Can I get the Wall Street Journal up here too?
Sam, you're not helping us.
I know. That's bothered me since I came in.
Give up your coffee.
I'm like...
Give up your coffee and make everybody else give theirs up too.
I got my curric. I'll just get a curric.
Or we start charging for it.
I'll just get a curric here. I, I'm thinking we need to get one or two.
Yeah, good luck with that.
And that's...
So, are you guys wanting to try to find more money for raises or we get 10 on 1% or a flat dollar amount or whatever that works out to? Cause I don't know where it's gonna come from.
I don't, I'd love to give, I'd love to give another 1%, but I don't know, I don't...
I just don't see it.
I don't, I don't, you know, I'm...
I don't see that. We're gonna try nickel and dime to get the deficit back to zero.
Yeah. I just...
So I don't see where we would even, even get more from.
Yeah, I don't, I...
Kinda where my, I'm at.
No, I want, I would create...
Great idea, but...
I've looked, you know, there's...
I really don't want the deficit.
Well, you could put it in transfer.
So where do we see insurance going next year? I mean, it's not everywhere. It'll probably get any cheaper.
No.
That's probably the biggest jump this year, right?
Do what?
The insurance is the, probably the biggest jump this year.
Between health insurance, liability and workers' comp, yes.
So if that keeps going up, we're gonna just keep finding money somewhere for it. So where's that gonna come from in the future?
Well, hopefully, talked with Debbie a little bit, but hopefully we won't increase our health insurance premium, maybe for several years.
So we should be a little, little bit steadier for establishing that or...
So as long as our GL and property and auto coverage don't increase again, we should be in better shape. And work calm, I mean...
And we can, we're very hard on trying to get that mod down.
Right.
Why or what, so...
I mean, just keep, keep in mind that we got a lot of moving parts with public works and law enforcement and EMS. I mean, it's just keep, keep in mind that we got a lot of moving parts with public works and law enforcement and EMS, people driving high-speed vehicles and stuff, and so- A, uh, a very bad accident could occur, and, uh, that could really affect work comp big time.
Did you see the picture that Columbia had of that fire truck there at, uh, 70 and, and 63? And I mean, it's, it's, it's in a wrong lane, it's, it's going everywhere.
You get so excited.
Is it ice or something?
No, but it's, you hear, you got a fire truck that's, that's moving probably to, you know, and all it takes is one stupid person talking on, texting or something.
Work with work.
It's, it's-
We got a refund this year. Even if our mod goes up, if they evaluate our claims, we could still see a refund from work comp?
Our refund is based on when they come and do the audit of the salaries, so if I overestimated the total salaries, because it takes so much on overtime too and salaries, so once they come and get an audit back. I'm anticipating still getting a little back on, but it really has nothing to do with what they're charging.
You're basically overpaying.
Then they increase the salaries, I don't know. They, they usually take what I did last year and put a 3% on. We also hired more people from past year, but what our mod is based on is how much they had to pay out. They had to pay out for it then. But they come up with an estimate cost, the rates per job class is actually gone there, but, and your mod is up there, but-
Yeah, it's, uh, it's different, cause it's just a total shot in the dark, and then you pay, I mean, I have MEN too, but I pay monthly, so I pay based on what my actual payroll is. But I pay a little higher rate to do that. But my fear is that if I have a year where I hire a bunch of new people, and, uh, going forward, I don't wanna have to pay 20, 30,000 dollars a year because they didn't estimate that.
You shouldn't have sent me that on that Henry rifle.
So I just pay that that following month, so it's all, you know?
I don't, I don't get a refund. I was gonna say that, I was like, I know exactly what I'm paying because-
Yeah, they're saying they have to ship it to a dealer?
When they did, the estimate.
And I, I just thought, well, we can ship it to the sheriff.
I'm not gonna ship it to him.
Couldn't figure out where-
I'll ship, I got plenty of friends who know that.
Really give you a good explanation of-
Many formulas to get to the end cost of your premium, but that's where the mod is.
And I've been with other companies too. Been with other companies too, and, I mean, it was always like, oh, it just worked out. It's like, what? Ain't no way it worked out. Or, or they, or they give you a little bit of a credit, but then the next year would come, and it was like, well, how did I end up? And you, you could never really tell.
Got it.
Yeah, I, I like it because I, I never got any information on that, how it's fixed up.
Right.
They're very clear, open book about how to do it.
Yeah, and they give you, and they'll give you an audit report at the end of the year, and it'll show exactly, and you could basically figure out how many hours you have by classification computed out.
So I hope when I have to bill back after the audit's done, as we know, we're only a year behind, that would happen.
It's noon, right on the money.
Okay, so law enforcement tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then public works.
Yeah, well, try to-
They're gonna come back, and then I'll talk about Eugene water tomorrow, too.
Oh, and Larry?
They're gonna look at it in 2018, so I'm sure they're not ready to discuss what rates they would come up with.
Right, but that, we probably need to talk about it and at least get on the same page. Figure out how to get rid of the seismic event in Eugene.
How long have we recessed till 4:30?
Second.
All a favor?
Aye.
Since Christmas, since Jeff's, why?
Tell him to come to Better Move tomorrow. What's, uh, yeah. What's, uh, what's tonight, is it over tonight, or?
That'll be worse.